Oh, gosh.
I'm talking about, yeah.
No, that's scary. Yeah.
Do we know where Jose is?
He just went to his office. He forgot something.
Okay. We'll get started in just a second here. We can't, uh, we don't want to get started without our city manager. Great. All right. Madam Clerk, could you, so I'd like to call this meeting to order on January 21st. It is 5:40 PM. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mayor Robert Parkhurst.
Present.
Mayor Protam Christine Lowe.
Present.
Councilmember Edward Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Gene Goss.
Here.
And Councilmember Kelly, uh, Kelly Krebs.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum this evening.
Great. Um, then Mayor Protam Lowe, uh, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Uh, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
All right. Please stand if you please can. Put your right hand over your heart. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. So, in light of some of the events that have happened, obviously, in the last week and a half, two weeks, and I know yesterday was Martin Luther King Day, and I just wanted to say a couple of things about the fire, but also just thank, um, all of our residents and our neighbors for getting through this. I know that our cities next to us, Altadena and Pasadena, have been hit so much, you know, harder than us, but also that, um, they were the initial cities that really desegregated our, our country, and especially our west coast, and they were so diligent about desegregation and inclusiveness. And so I wanted to, to say some prayers for them, especially as they go through this rebuild, and, and I hope that, that they're able to keep the same theme of, of inclusivity through the, um, same work that Martin Luther King, uh, Junior did through his work. So, I wanted to read this poem, and there was a fire that, um, I went on back, I think, into years ago, and it was all the way in Arizona. And Chief Bartlett and I were gone for about two weeks, and this poem was written after that fire, but I thought it was really relevant to us as well. It's called "After the Fire" by Steve Emig. "I thought it was a nightmare when I awoke." I'll try not to cry. "It couldn't be real, some kind of tragic joke. But there I stood amid, amid the char, the house, my life, even my car. The grass crunched black beneath my shoe. I had my family, but no idea what to do. Lost the house, furniture, our pictures and things. We had each other, the kids, and our wedding rings. Everything got blurry. I could still smell the smoke. With the charred nine iron, I began to poke. I hoped for something, some item dear, to have suver, um, survived the inferno. A small reason to cheer. Soot, ashes, charred pieces of wood, shattered picture frames. I wanted not to cry. I wanted hope. I wanted someone to blame. Our home now ruins. It just couldn't be real. I found nothing to pick up. I didn't even know how to feel. The skeletons of trees in our backyard, black, crisp, and silent. Everything was charred. I rubbed my eyes. I screamed loud at God. Why did this happen? It was all just too hard. That's when I saw it, a single green blade of grass, a shoot of life among the black, the future surging from the past. I walked closer. By this liver of green, I froze. Against the forces of hell, that blade of grass rose. It couldn't shout or scream. That shoot simply grew. If that blade of grass could start over, I realized we could come back too. It was tough the weeks after. We began anew, step by step, the memory of that blade of grass I clung to and kept each day a bit of progress, to replace the life we had lost. Little things meant much more now. We struggled, but it was worth the cost. Each day, new we woke up, then we figured out what to do. If that single green blade of grass could grow back, we knew that we could too." And he has a subtext. It's called "The White Bear," so.
Thank you so much. It's very nice. Very appropriate. All right. Uh, moving on to items on the, the, the next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Uh, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please.
I would like to remove one item from the agenda under presentations, uh, and it's introduce of new police department staff members. Would you please remove that?
All right. Great. Are there any other, uh, requests for changes, edits to the agenda?
I'm to approve. Oh, sorry.
I, I was just saying if there's.
I submitted one typographical change to item C.
Okay. Thank you.
It should read twenty-five thousand five hundred rather than just twenty-five thousand. But it's been submitted, and I, I believe the city clerk is aware.
Wonderful. Thank you for catching that.
Okay. I will move to approve the agenda as updated through our conversation.
Do I have a second? Second. Uh, and all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then motion carries. All right. Um, Attorney Garagosian, would you please, uh, report out from closed session?
Just thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss four different items. The first is public employee discipline dismissal release. No reportable action was taken. Second, the city council had a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. Again, uh, no reportable action was taken. Third, the city council had a conference with legal counsel regarding initiation of litigation. Again, no action was taken. And fourth, uh, the city council met regarding a threat to public services or facilities. Uh, no action was taken, and I'd like to note that with respect to item number three, uh, Councilmember Krebs, uh, recused herself due to a conflict of interest.
Thank you, city attorney. All right. Uh, next item is the approval for reading resolutions and ordinances by title only. Do I have a motion to, uh, for, if we're such?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now we have the minutes. Uh, we'll start with the minutes for December 10th. Um, are there, uh, so, Madam Clerk, did you receive any edits to the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, the, uh, city clerk, city clerk's office did not receive any requests on the December 10th meeting minutes.
All right. Thank you. Um, are there any, uh, comments or edits, uh, on the minutes? There, uh, if there are none, I will entertain a motion to, uh, adopt the minutes.
So moved.
Say it. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. On to January 9th, uh, the special meeting minutes. Madam Clerk, I understand there are some edits to those minutes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, uh, the city clerk's office received a request from Councilmember Garcia to have the minutes reflect that the city council adopted resolution proclaiming a local emergency in Sierra Madre.
Great. Thank you for that. Uh, any other comments here on the dais? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve as I mentioned.
Second.
All right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right. Continuing on through the agenda, the mayor and city council reports. Who would like to start this evening?
I can start.
Please.
Haven't written any dates down, but, um, I just, I just want to give a high level, level view of, uh, what I, what I did. So I attended the candlelight walk. I mean, we have to go back to December now, right? Also, I did attend, uh, which was well-attended. I attended the, um, the ending of the Blessing of the Menorah. I wasn't there for the actual blessing, but, um, I'd estimate there was over, over a hundred people there. That keeps getting larger and larger. Um, it was, it was good to see that community, the community, um, around that event. The, uh, senior community commission meeting was supposed to be the Thursday after, um, the fire started, so that was obviously canceled. So there was, there's nothing to report there. And obviously, um, many, um, incident, uh, I attended virtually a lot of incident, um, uh, meetings for the Eaton Fire. Went to the YMCA multiple times, um, but, I mean, that's all kind of a big mishmash of dates and times. I really can't tell you all the things I attended, uh, but, uh, there was a lot of, uh, updates from the city manager and everything through this, through this process. So, um, that's really my report for this.
Great. Thank you so much. Who would like to go next?
I can go next.
Great.
I think my report largely tracks, um, Councilmember Garcia's in terms of, um, you know, we didn't have a lot of official events in the intervening, um, five weeks. Um, but the, yes, the candlewalk was, as, as usual, a very inspiring and, and community-building event. And then, um, uh, and then more recently, um, you know, been, been focused on getting information out to the public in terms of, you know, re-circulating our, um, uh, Facebook Live and other, and other Nixls and other information. Um, also have been to the, the YMCA a number of times, um, and just really inspired by the, uh, our partnership with the YMCA particularly, but also just the efforts of individual citizens who just showed up on Wednesday to start, Wednesday and Thursday, to start after the fire, to start, you know, uh, organizing, um, relief efforts and, you know, a few, uh, lots and lots of citizens, but I'll name two in particular that I, you know, particularly inspired by, and that's Fred Thomas and Russ Meek. Neither of those names should be a surprise to you because those are, are, are help, are helpers, are heroes in, in lots of situations, good and bad. So, anyway, that's just been really inspiring. Um, and then, um, you know, had the benefit of, uh, along with, um, Councilmember Garcia, the benefit of a, of a tour of our Auburn water tanks. Um, just really amazed at the, um, fortune of the city, and also because we made our own luck in making sure we had defensible spaces that neither of those water tanks, um, were damaged despite the fact that you could see, obviously, that there was, um, active fire, you know, quite near both of those sites. So, um, it was good to see that up, up front and just see the benefits of the mitigation efforts that the city has taken to protect our assets.
So, I, I don't want to leave out, these are all the great events we all went to. Uh, I didn't go to the candlewalk, uh, candlelight walk myself, but I did want to make sure we mention the Rose Float, the, I, the. You know, went and rolled through Kirsten Court, and then again on TV the next day, if you weren't down there for the parade live, uh, another, and another amazing performance by our Rose Float Association. And so kudos to all the volunteers in the Rose Float Committee, uh, for just an excellent job. Just so much pride in this community for what they turn out every year. Yeah, I, uh, we had a couple of meetings canceled last week because of the fires. The library, uh, project ad hoc committee was supposed to meet on the 13th, and we, that was postponed. Last Thursday's Foothill Employment Training Consortium Policy Board Meeting was also postponed. That was on Thursday morning postponed, and has yet to be rescheduled. Uh, then last Thursday, I did attend the Council of Governments meeting in Monrovia. Um, and it was kind of a housekeeping meeting. We elected a new third vice president. Yes, they have three vice presidents. Which is kind of fun. Uh, his, uh, his name is Michael Alawos. Uh, he's a council member in Glendora, a great guy. And I'm happy to say that I've cast our vote for Michael and was in the majority. And then we also voted for something, uh, which was kind of substantively important. The, the COG is trying to expand, and so they're creating an affiliates program to bring in agencies that are not likely to get voting membership on the board itself, but will be able to participate in our committees and participate in policy discussions, and they will be paying dues. So it's a way for COG to expand its reach and, uh, to kind of expand its footprint. And that passed by a very over-run majority, in which I also cast the, uh, the majority. And, uh, one last thing I wanted to say, uh, building on what Councilmember Garcia said. All five of us throughout this, uh, this series of events were in constant contact with each other and through the city manager's office and through our mayor. So every step of the way, every member of the council got every single development as they were happening. And on the worst night, the worst, uh, the fire night, that meant we were getting them until three and four in the morning, and then again at five and six in the morning. So I want you to understand that the, the city council was there. The best, best role for us to play in, when these kinds of things happen is to get in the, in the, in the background and not be in the way. Let the professionals do what they're supposed to do, which they did, and then some. So I just wanted to say that you didn't see a lot of us. You did see our mayor, and he, he was out our front person, but, and he did a fantastic job, in my opinion. Uh, but we were out there, and we will continue to be, uh, doing whatever we can to support the city. That's my report.
Thank you so much.
The Rose Float decoration was a lot of fun. I participated in that with my, my mother-in-law and had a, had a good time putting seeds onto the float. And I didn't know if you guys are aware of this, but it's not just a bunch of, like, really local volunteers, but we also have people that come from out of state, come from other cities. And if you ever are willing to host one of these, um, these families or these people that come into town, they don't want to be able to have to drive forty-five minutes home to come back the next morning at seven AM and start decorating. So, um, the last couple, three years or so, we've offered our home to some residents while we're out of town. So if you guys are ever willing to do that and you're out of town during Christmas break and New Year's time, it'd be really nice to offer that to their, to their association. So go ahead and contact them for that. The candlelight vigil was great. I love that so many different religions are represented, and it's, uh, such a collaborative effort. I also wanted to thank all the people that went down to the Y. I can't believe how many people give and give and give in the city. Some, besides Russ and Fred, who really oversaw everything. They wanted to really let you guys know that there are these, there's a list of about ten people here that, that have been there twenty-four, seven since, since the day after the fire. Um, and that's, uh, Melania Thomas, Mary Pings, Andromeda Legorreta, Heidi Hartman, Matt Fellows, Liz Nuccio. And the Nuccios also lost part of their, um, nursery up in, um, Altadena, and so they've still been donating their time. Casey Clark, who's a local, um, uh, recent college graduate. Troy, hi, uh, let's see, and Natalie Turco. So we want to thank them. Um, I also wanted to say that, um, I ran into two of our, our associate fire, neighboring fire chiefs that helped do our battalion chief services for our city. And one of them is a, is a, is a resident here in Sierra Madre, and that's, um, Chief Richard Oishi, and then also Chief Tom Devlin. And I just want to say they coordinated with our fire department so well. They know our canyon. They know our city. And they, with the help of our Sierra Madre Fire Department, really fought that fire hard in the very beginning, all, uh, as soon as it came. So I want to give a big shout-out to them, as well as our local fire department, and all the other people that came to help too. And our police department, oh my gosh, I'm sorry. Our police department too for getting everyone evacuated so quickly. I just can't believe that we had such a safe exit. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So, I'll try to run through these things pretty quickly. On December 11th, the Transportation Committee met. And, uh, they're continuing to refine the, the schedule for the, um, city, uh, bus. And, uh, plan to have the selection of the bidder and approval of the route, um, at one of our upcoming meetings. I think it's on January 28th. It may get pushed to the next meeting. But that's coming along really well. Uh, I stopped by the, uh, Historical Society, uh, Christmas gathering, which was very nice, very dedicated group of people helping to preserve the history of the city. And then the following day on December 12th, Gem Plumbing had its 75th anniversary of the chamber's new offices. Uh, it was great to, to celebrate, uh, their, uh, achievements and their longstanding, um, work here in the city. December 14th, the, the Sierra Madre Museum had an open house and had carolers, and they were absolutely phenomenal, really, really nice. And then later that day, Santa came down to the firehouse. We had a parade that went from, um, uh, the, the Y, uh, down to the firehouse, and, um, lots of people showed up for that. It was a really, really great time. December 16th, Community Services, uh, meeting, no, no reportable action coming out of that. Uh, on December 17th, we had the, the city's holiday luncheon and a chance to really recognize. Everyone in the city had a nice raffle, uh, and really thanked everybody for all their hard work and lots of, of great food. And then, uh, just last week, the Clean Power Alliance had, uh, a, a meeting and no reportable action from that. I'll close my comments with the Eaton Fire, um, and, and build on what some of the other people have said. We saw an outpouring, uh, of, of support, as, as folks have said, from the community, but not just there, but, but throughout the state. Reaching out to, to us in the city was Assemblymember Harabedian, you know, former mayor, former city council member, seeing what we needed. He arranged a meeting with, um, Speaker Rivas in, in Pasadena and with a number of, of other, um, government officials, asking what, what we needed and what was most important to our city. Senator Perez has reached out to multiple of us, uh, as well as, as Supervisor Barker, really trying to make sure we, we've got what we need to, to make sure, um, that we, we recover and rise from this, this situation. Even our, our, our federal representative, uh, Judy Chu, uh, has reached out, um, to us and, and asked, you know, how she can help out. There was last week a, uh, press conference with, um, the PUSD. What's it? Blanco is the chief.
Superintendent.
Superintendent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, and you're talking about reopening the schools and, and wanted the support of, of Pasadena and, and Sierra Madre, and so we were there, uh, to help support the schools and help, help them get them reopened as quickly as possible. Uh, on the fire itself, uh, there's just so many people to thank. You know, I think we all saw, uh, our neighbors come in. Uh, from the police side, you know, we had units from Arcadia, Baldwin Park, Covina, El Monte, Monrovia, as well as the National Guard, helping to protect life and property here in the city. And I know I'm forgetting folks, and I really apologize. Uh, on the fire side, um, somehow my house ended up being a staging place, and I got to see lots of fire trucks out there from all across the, the west, from, from Arizona, from Nevada, from Northern California. Elko, Nevada, the most northeast corner of the state, there were four or five units that came to, to help us out. And really, you know, just, it, it, this is a tragedy for so many people, but kind of like a phoenix that rises from the ashes. There's, there's a part of it that shows that the best comes out in people, that really the dedication. And then, um, the staff here. I, I got a chance to poke my head in the EOC to, to really see what's going on down there. And I, I want to start with Bob Spears and, and all the work that he has done. That EOC ran like clockwork. It was so smooth. It was so organized, and all of the pre-work that was done allowed us to respond really quickly. And everybody rolled up their sleeves. We had the library and, and community services staff helping doing communications. Our police, uh, coordinating with all the other a, agencies. Our deputy city manager helping to run the EOC. SAR was down there, our search and rescue team, working on, on, uh, logistics. The water department, making sure there was fire for both, uh, firefighting and for drinking. It's just, and, and our, our fire chief. Our fire chief was there, making sure we got a seat at the table to make sure our needs were met. And then finally, our city manager. And someone told me, um, he said, you know, uh, we always knew that our city manager had water in his veins, but he has ice in his veins. He was so calm, so cool, so organized on this. Um, it was just, we are, we are so fortunate in this city to have this staff that ha, have worked day and night to help protect the city and, and protect the residents and protect the property. And I really want to thank everyone. I know I've left people out, but I really want to thank everyone for that. So now we'll, we'll just switch, uh, to the more, um, tactical, I guess, is the city announcements and events. So, um, first is that the, the, uh, YWCA is still hosting Senior Lunch and Food Program, uh, Monday through Thursday at the Hart Park Senior Center, starting at eleven-thirty. And for more information, you can call six-two-six, three-five-five, five-two-seven-eight. And, um, on Thursdays, you can get, um, extra meals that can take you, help take you through the weekend. During the Eaton Fire, also the library was open, uh, and provided, uh, emergency services to, to Sierra Madre, which was, was just fantastic. Also, City Hall remained open, answering questions, offering assistance, um, providing water and N95 masks. You know, at one point in, in City Hall, people from El Monte just showed up, and they showed up with crates and boxes of water. No heads up, we just had, the whole aisle down there was full of water and full of food for everyone. The YMCA, as I mentioned before, is continuing its recovery work and is requesting the following donations: non-perishable items, bottled water, and volunteers. Uh, they will continue to operate their distribution center through the end of this week. And on, um, yesterday, uh, in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King's day of service, uh, first partner Jennifer Cybill Newsome visited the YMCA to highlight the recovery efforts and discuss ways to give. Uh, and she was very gracious. Um, she was there. She walked through the whole, uh, Y, really engaged with the community, engaged with, um, the, the children. Um, we had some children there singing, uh, "Defying Gravity." Probably seven or eight years old, absolutely just, it, it was very moving. So we, I want to thank the, the state for, for that and the support that they've given there. Uh, this Thursday, January 23rd, we've got a craft event at 1:00 PM at the Hart Park Senior Center, and it's going to be making, uh, potpourri jars with lights. Uh, registration is required, and it costs five dollars, and that includes all supplies. And for more information, you can call the same number we said before, which is six-two-six, three-five-five, five-two-seven-eight. And that information is also on our website.
Really quick, did you know that Bob Spears is already repairing the hiking trails too? So if you'd like to volunteer to help that, there's also a need for that.
And donations to the Fletcher Fund.
Yes.
So, so, um, do we have on the agenda tonight the, the governor's executive orders, or is that a future one?
That, that's going to be part of the Eaton Fire updates.
All right. Yeah, that was, one of the other things is, is that the governor's office reached out to us and gave us, um, uh, updates on all of the executive orders that were being issued as they came, and you'll hear more about those in a minute. All right. Now we get on to, um, public comment for items not on the agenda, but before we do that, we've got our public participation code. It is on the forms in the back. For the first couple of meetings of the year, we typically read this out just to remind us all. So, uh, our public participation code of conduct says, "Your participation is welcome and invited at all city council meetings. The council requests that participants refrain from making personal, slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. A person who continues to disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting after being warned by the mayor or designee to cease disruption, disruption, may be precluded from future participation in the meeting. No signs, posters, or other large objects shall be brought into the council chambers where other meeting place, if doing so would disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly course of the meeting." And with that, I'd like to open it to, uh, public, uh, comment for items not on the agenda. First, uh, Madam Clerk, did we receive any, um, uh, items submitted, uh, like, submitted electronically prior to the meeting?
Mr. Mayor, uh, the city clerk's office received three emails, uh, electronically, and they were forwarded to the city council, uh, prior to the, this meeting for review and consideration. Uh, and at this time, we have, uh, one speaker card received.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, the speaker card is from Jean Richardson.
Great. Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. I'm Jean Richardson. My husband Jim is with me here. We reside at five-seven-five North Hermosa, uh, in the city of Sierra Madre. The home next to us at five-eight-five North Hermosa is completely burned and not salvageable. The fire spread to our home. We have damage in our house that is fixable. Were it not for the firefighters who broke into our home and put out the fire from in, sorry, from inside and outside, we would not have a house. So my first statement is to thank the firefighters. They circulated past the burned house. They circulated past the burned house for several days and continued to address smoldering to prevent further spread. And they checked our house regularly. They were, without fail, polite, informative, and conscientious. If I could get under control here. My second point relates to demolition. We visited the Sierra Madre City Hall to find out the regulations on demolition of the burned home next to us. We were told it's up to the owner to do this, and there is no timeframe. Clearly, this is a tragedy for the homeowners, and I suspect they are overwhelmed with their loss. But also, a structure that is burned and is part standing is a safety hazard, as well as a health hazard. I would suggest that the city find a demolition company to evaluate all the homes that need to be demolished and help the homeowners negotiate the price to do this work. I would suggest a reasonable timeframe for demolition, and that would seem to be no longer than three months. I believe the city could help those homeowners sort their way through finding a demolition company and negotiating costs. This would also help the surrounding homeowners know what to expect. My third point is that there's a lot of vegetation burn. It would help those of us who have vegetation burn to know what to plant to prevent soil erosion and mudslides into our neighbors' homes. I would suggest that the city have an open forum with the knowledgeable people to advise us on what and how to plant in charred areas. I would suggest contacting faculty at Cal Poly Pomona or UC Riverside, who have programs in sustainable landscaping, and asking them if they could provide a forum or at least clear guidelines on our website, so that we would know what to plant, how to plant, when to plant, and how to take care of these charred hillsides. There may be additional ways the city could help us as we get through this tragedy. I realize the costs are on the homeowners, but there are a lot of homeowners, and they have different levels of ability to seek out information and to act responsibly. There are ways the city can help all of us sort through information, support all of those with loss or damage to property, and restore our city. Finally, once again, I want to thank the firefighters and the police who protected us and our homes.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. I encourage you to stick around for just a little bit. I think some of your questions will be answered tonight. Madam Clerk, do we have any other? Mr. Gordon?
David Gordon, very far north of Sierra Madre, so to begin with, a word of thanks to the city council and to the staff and the fire and police department for ensuring that we emerge relatively unscathed from this terrible event. Wearing my hat as president of the Sierra Madre Playhouse, we obviously canceled our program, and we're starting again this Saturday with a, first time we've done this, we're doing a Lunar New Year festival with events from a variety of the arts, starting on Saturday morning with a program for young people, about an 18-year-old, star athlete at the Maui High School anxiously awaiting news of her college acceptance, which is visited by the spirit of Patsy Mink, the first Asian-American Congresswoman. We're following that up on Friday evening with the first known Chinese-American feature film ever made in Hollywood, 1916, directed actually by a woman, Marion Wong. And it's recently been restored and rediscovered, so it's quite an extraordinary event, accompanied by live piano. Bob Baker Marionettes are coming back, there's going to be a lion dance, followed by a workshop for children to learn about Marionettes. On Saturday, the 1st of February, we have a concert by the Asia-American New Music Institute, features compositions inspired by "The Moon." We have a dance program on Saturday, the 8th of February, a Philippine folk arts presentation, a celebration of Philippine culture. On the following day, on the Sunday, part of our jazz series, Eric Ching, performance inspired by a variety of artists. And then we have another music performance on the Wednesday. And then we're doing a wonderful play called "Masterclass," which is directed by Tim Dang, from, who was the director of East-West Players, who's coming back to Sierra Madre to direct that play. So please make your reservations for our first-ever Lunar New Year festival with this variety of performances. As you know, we are now a performing arts center, so we are adding, this year, we're adding dance to classical music, jazz, and silent film, and all the other things that are making us get quite a reputation among the arts in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. All right. So we have one presentation tonight, and it is the Eaton Fire update. City Manager, would you like to kick us off?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I won't repeat a lot of what you and the council has shared, but I do want to personally thank the 100 employees that we have that played such an extraordinary role in the event that we just experienced. I also want to thank Kirk Knopf from the YMCA, and Solar Vic, who was in touch with us, and then Robert Jertie, who was here with us all night, on that first night, working on our communication systems downstairs. And I want a special thanks to my executive team, to Chief Brett Bartlett, Chief Barrientos, Manager Hernandez, DCM Aguilar, City Librarian Regan, Public Works Director Inez, Water Superintendent Stephen McGee, who kept every hydrant pressurized during this extraordinary event, our community services team, Ted Taggart, Brandon Wilson, Ryan Lopez, as well as Joseph Nazrat, Claire Lynn, Josh Wolfe, our entire finance team, the dedicated police and firefighters, and then Bob Spears. Together, we proved that Sierra Madre's strength is in its people, and I couldn't be prouder of each and every one of them. Tonight, the city council will get a brief update from each department head, and following that presentation, we can take questions and provide some answers. First, I'd like to invite Chief Bartlett to the podium, and he'd be followed by Police Chief Barrientos.
City Manager, just a quick question, do you want to wait till the end for questions, or would you like to do it as we go?
I think we can, as we go, for each department.
Great, thank you.
Each department head, three to five minutes for the presentation.
Good evening. For the first address on this, Mayor Parker, Mayor Protem Low, and honorable council members. Basically, providing a update on the recent Eaton Fire to include the current status, response efforts, and plans for recovery and prevention. So basically, just some key points. The incident overview, as we stand today, obviously, the incident name is the Eaton Fire. The location of the start was near Altadena Drive and Midwick Drive in the Altadena-Pasadena area. Started on January 7th at approximately 6:18 in the evening. The cause is still under investigation. Total acreage burned is 14,021 acres. Containment currently is at 89%. Structures impacted on the whole incident threatened were 6,775, destroyed 9,418. For Sierra Madre, out of our 3,921 structures, we had 37 structures threatened and 15 destroyed. Response efforts, agencies involved, basically on January 7th, Sierra Madre Fire Department entered into unified command with Los Angeles County Fire Department, CAL FIRE, the U.S. Forest Service with the, specifically, Angeles National Forest, and then the next day, Arcadia Fire Department. Personnel resources on the fire, as of today, still 2,375 firefighters. On the initial response from Sierra Madre, you had eight firefighters. That was a total recall for what we had at that point in time. And I will make a non-shameless plug, that they worked their tails off for 36 hours straight, until we got the cavalry in here to help out somewhere in there. Everything else is pretty much a fog, as far as the timeline goes. Currently, significant pieces of equipment on the incident, we still have 173 engines, 32 hand crews, 10 helicopters, 20 water tenders, and eight bulldozers. Initially, Sierra Madre, we recalled folks for the wind event, thankfully, so when the fire broke out, we were able to put both engines in service and one rescue ambulance that attached themselves to the engine for fire suppression efforts. Evacuations, all evacuation orders have been lifted, and some evacuation warnings remain ineffective for the Altadena areas. The incident, we have eight injuries reported among firefighters, with 17 civilian fatalities. Very glad to say, for Sierra Madre, zero injuries for firefighters and zero fatalities for our residents. The current status, firefighters continue to mop up and extinguish hotspots within the perimeter of the fire, which includes portions of Sierra Madre. The repopulation of residents is ongoing, with zones being released in phases to ensure safety in public and utility, ensure safety of public and utility agencies. Numerous calls for service continue to be received from communities that are repopulating, including ours, so we're on those, along with the resources that we have that are helping us out. The infrastructure group is being utilized to assist the public works with the clearing of roadways and opening upstream storm drains. Southern California Gas reported that service has been restored to 3,040 structures, and Southern California Eneson reports that service has been restored to 11,862 structures, with 7,000, excuse me, 7,549 remaining. Fire suppression repair is nearing completion, and resources continue to stage in the La Quinata area along the western flank of the fire, ready to respond to any new fire starts or fire activity within the current footprint. The particularly dangerous situation, red flag warning expired today at 10:00 AM. The northeast winds will gradually decrease through the morning, and conditions will remain critically dry with extreme low relative humidity. Community impact, again, all evacuation orders were downgraded for Sierra Madre and placed into warnings on January 12th at approximately 4:00 PM. Power outages, power was temporarily disrupted for residents, all services, at least to my knowledge, have been restored. And then air quality, smoke advisories were issued for the surrounding areas, air quality has improved significantly as of yesterday, and according to AQMD, ranged from moderate to good, but as we've seen, that fluctuates with any time the wind blows. So removal and mitigation efforts, or excuse me, recovery and mitigation efforts, the following steps are underway or planned. So the damage assessments, damage inspection teams have completed inspections for 99% of the structures within the fire perimeter, and again, that's the whole fire itself. Erosion control, which is the next potential that we have. Efforts have been turned to erosion and slope stabilization in the burned areas to mitigate the fire and mud debris flows. As far as fire prevention goes, to quote Churchill, right, don't let any good crisis go to waste. So mitigation, prevention issues coming up, or in the future, people are going to be hearing a lot from me and my department on how we can even do better as a community. So we're looking to, planned initiatives include recruitment efforts for the Fire Safe Council. Again, Fire Safe Council, we're trying to get that going again, and I'm assuming we should have about 11,000 residents interested in this, as well as fire-wise communities, the same thing. And we're going to be expanding our public education programs on fire safety. Again, we're going to, we're going to step it up as much as we can to hopefully do even better next time. Looking forward, it is my recommendation that we, the following actions to better prepare our community is, you know, we look at some funding resources to help with wildfire mitigation efforts. Our local hazard mitigation plan is going to be one of those, through some federal fundings. Enhance public awareness campaigns on fire preparedness, which I spoke to on the Fire Safe Council and Fire Wise Communities. Evaluate the need to upgrade firefighter resources, which was done in our master plan, so we're going to be really looking at, taking a look at that, and prioritizing on events just like this. What is going to best serve this community and how we can achieve that. And then to continue to strengthen the partnerships with regional and state agencies, as Mayor Protem spoke to, thankfully, and I'll toot our own horn as a city, right, having our own, all our own resources and departments, 100%, we have built excellent relationships to where we got resources here just by a phone call. I, you know, I can't necessarily say that for any of our larger agencies. So the partnerships that we have formed throughout these years has just been incredible through all departments, not just Fire Department. And in closing, the Sierra Madre Fire Department is committed to ensuring the safety and well-being of our community, and I extend my gratitude to all the first responders that helped us out, all the volunteers, and quite honestly, to all the residents for their cooperation and resilience during this challenging time. This was 100% a community effort. The, you know, we always, you know, end up in the spotlight on the public safety side. This went so much deeper than that, and I'm glad that the recognition has been given to the rest of the city staff and the team, even to those that are what we refer to as the pit and the ones taking the phone calls. I refer to them as my heat shield. They took a lot of flak from me, answering questions that they had no answers to, right? So I really, I really appreciate that, and just, like I said, everybody stepping up and doing the job, all the way from our staff to the community. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, go ahead.
So Chief, can you, can you explain, kind of focusing on what we did right? With our EOC being open for the wind event, you having the ability to recall, because normally, we can just, we're running one engine, we only have staff for one engine, but you were able to have staff for two engines and to fight the fire, and then because of our planning, we were able to have the city of Santa Fe Springs come in and backfill the station for normal calls throughout the city. Is that, can you kind of explain and expand on how that went?
I will do my best, absolutely. Typically, our fire department at full strength is staffed with 15 operational folks. We currently have one vacancy, that brings us down to four.
Not per shift, that's the entire staffing.
Yeah, per shift is five.
Yes.
Three on the engine and two on the ambulance. We, because of leaves and things like that, people out at school, we even had a couple in New Orleans for a conference, all I could recall was eight. We fortunately have one reserve, so that got us up to nine. So the response effort from the nine folks that we had to include one of our reserves, like I said, was absolutely amazing. But then, like I mentioned, the partnerships that we have with our neighboring agencies, Arcadia, was amazing, and the response that they have and their expertise, being on numerous fires, Battalion Chief Oishi is outstanding, and he's going to get some off-duty beverage from me, for sure.
He also lives in town, everybody.
Yeah, and he has a vested interest in this town, for sure, but amazing. Fire chief from Monrovia called me up, what do we need? I said, I'd take whatever you got, and he sent an engine right away, just sent it. Through relationships that the city manager and myself has, he started it with some conversation with Santa Fe Springs, reached out to their chief, he said, whatever you need. I said, I can use whatever you get. He goes, how about an engine to, you know, come run calls in your city? I said, absolutely, because at that time, our staff was up 36 hours, fighting the fire nonstop, they needed a break. It was becoming very unsafe for them to be out there. So Santa Fe Springs came up. came up, put the engine in the station, and our guys got to finally sleep for about five or six hours. So it's, it's just absolutely amazing. The same thing from the City of Laverne, Fire Chief called me, what do you need? But at that time, was, we pretty much had the span of control for, for the people that were running our single, or our, say, our support staff. It wasn't part of the incident, it was, was big enough, and we couldn't throw any more at it. So, yeah, hopefully that answered your question. We just, it just kind of came together on, and everything. But it is part of pre-planning, to be aware of the events. And I know it becomes, maybe some folks might have looked at this, especially what we call the red flag parking restrictions in the canyon. I'm glad people listened to that. That provided us a lot of access to get resources up there. But again, the community event on this, so when we, when we put out this messaging, I'm just so glad that people listened.
Other questions? Yes, please.
So, yeah, the, the response from our neighbors was overwhelming, and that was really just so heartwarming. Can you explain a little bit about, sort of, we've talked a lot about mutual aid and the professionalization of our Fire Department, allowing us to join our local, you know, our local region to have that mutual aid. And can you explain a little bit for the public, sort of, why in this particular event, because I assume, you know, most of our mutual aid agencies were involved in this incident, that we, you know, brought in agencies or had, had support outside of our mutual aid, and then at what point that mutual aid actually did kick in and help, help support our efforts here?
The, just for a point of clarification, if I may as well, though, is we've always had mutual aid.
Right.
That, and that pretty much is the, you pick up the phone and ask, pretty please, and can you send us resources? But with, since the career department and moving forward to the paid department, and we, and the entering automatic aid, that's where resources are just automatic. It's the first available resource. But unfortunately, really, right on this, they were depleted already. Everybody was already out. We, we set up in the area. We weren't able to participate in that, but pre-positioned a strike team that was staged in Arcadia. But they initially went out to the, excuse me, the other, our other fire, Palisades Fire. And so all resources that were in this area pretty much responded to the Eaton Canyon area. But what we were able to do by building those relationships, like I said, I went straight to Hornsworth Park, which was where the command post originally was. And as you guys may be aware, Hornsworth Park doesn't really exist anymore. So we left there for the safety reasons, went down to Rose Bowl. And initially, there was probably five or six of us there. And now you see it as a big city, but that's, that's the time where, you know, I guess I bear that responsibility of holding a checkbook for a little bit. And I said, we are in unified command, which means that we have a say in this whole incident. We are a part of the incident command team, and that's where I requested that those resources started moving this way. And it just moved so fast that people just weren't able to see the bigger picture. I think we were able to finally take a little bit of a step back and elevate a view of it and saw that this thing was just going crazy. So to your point, the, the support that we now have is just, it really, the relationship building, it's just got us in the door to where before we, we kind of stood on our own, and we had to ask for help a lot, which was unfortunate. But it is due to my staff doing such a good job that we're, we're part of the team now. We're just like all the other ducks in the pond, and it's, it's truly helped out this community.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Yes?
First of all, I want to say thank you. I know you were evacuated. Your family couldn't even contact you because you were working so hard and, and with the help of all neighbors and everything, that even your wife and your daughter were evacuated in the middle of all of this. Leading to my first question was, when did the first evacuation alert go out? Do you remember the time?
A specific time? No, I do not remember. I still, my timeline is very fuzzy. I pictured this fire crossing town in an hour, but I know that's not true. It just, everything just kind of moved really quick. I know city manager, I discussed the evacuations, and we decided on everybody now. What I was very surprised with is, at the command post, when we started discussing evacuations, you know, kind of originally, again, they didn't see the big picture, and they, they indicated, we're not looking at anybody to the east yet. And I, I said, no, that's not going to happen. We're, this is, this is our jurisdiction, and we're going to do what we're going to do. We're evacuating. At that time, the suggestion was all the way down to Sierra Madre Boulevard, which is, it was surreal to me to really think that that, that was a possibility. But I know I've seen some of the fire modeling. Even the Bobcat predicted that it can go down to Orange Grove, and this one was, I mean, we did the warnings all the way down to the two-ten. And so it was, yeah, it, the timing of it, to me, felt like it was immediate. I don't think.
Me too.
I, I really don't think we wasted any time. Once we saw the fire across the hills over there from Eaton Canyon, and knowing the winds, there, we refer to trigger points, where, where the fire reaches a certain point in geographic location, or a timeframe or something like that happens, that's usually when we will start thinking about some evacuations and systematically go through it. There was, there was zero time for that. So we made that call to go ahead and evacuate everybody. And to city manager's point, Police Department and everybody that got involved, man, it just, it worked really well.
I was going to say, we saw it break out. We were at a meeting, actually, at the Hart House for, with staff for the, for the Sierra Madre Community Events Group. And at six-eighteen, six-nineteen, we heard it broke out. And then I left, and I had to, I think I got my first evacuation alert probably within half, within that fifteen to half an hour, minute span. And so I want to say thank you, because I can't even understand, like, how quickly that moved. And within, by nine o'clock, it had already gotten all the way to my house at Lima. So I want to commend your, your engines for knowing, knowing our area so well, knowing where to protect, protecting every single thing they could. And then I wanted to say about one o'clock or twelve o'clock in the morning is when I saw a strike team come through. And so that means that your guys and other, other agencies, local agencies, Arcadia, Monrovia, were defending us by themselves from six to midnight at least. And I, I can't believe it. It was, I've never seen something like that. So I want to say thank you for that. My last question was, looking at the future, of course, and looking at how, I mean, we did well, but obviously, how do we prevent future incidences? And I know your, the master plan showed some of the constraints you have with, with staffing and everything else. Would you see a need for a fire prevention officer to help with this education and help our public understand what they need to look forward to in terms of adhering to fire codes? How do we prevent this? Fire-safe plans, those kinds of things. Do you think that position would be useful in our city?
Absolutely, yes. We, in the past, in the history, even when we were volunteer, that was one of the paid positions that we had. And we actually had multiple people in fire prevention that were paid. Since then, we, we contract with the fire marshal, which is amazing, especially for the higher level stuff, code adoption and the like. But when I speak about we can do better, it's not that we did bad at all. It's just, there is opportunity out there to increase what we can do on the, on the public safety side. Having somebody in there in a full-time position, a community risk reduction officer is what I would like to call it, and it really is somebody that can look at, look at plans, look, do inspections, all this other stuff, but also get with the public, be a liaison between a Fire Safe Council and Fire Wise Communities, get out there and educate folks and bring people in on, on, on just numerous things, right? And, but be there every day of the week. Go out to schools, go out to everywhere, and just be that, that forward-facing component for the Fire Department, so.
So currently, we don't have that position, that position?
We do not, no. That, right now, the best we can do is, is we have a, one of our firefighters that has a lot of the state fire marshal certifications for fire inspectors, and he's basically just doing our inspection program as he's on modified duty. But once he returns back to work, he's just working two days and off for four. So, yeah, it is something that is there. But again, it's, it's a, it's a good funding constraint. We've got to figure out how to make that happen.
Thank you.
Other questions, please? I have a couple. So the, you mentioned the Fire Safe Councils and the Fire Wise Communities, I believe. So two questions. First, how do people find out about them? And can you tell us kind of high level what some of the benefits, like what are some of the immediate things can happen with some of those, those two bodies, the Fire Safe, Fire Wise Council and Fire Safe? I'm forgetting, I'm not getting the names right.
Fire Safe Council and Fire Wise Community?
Thank you.
Absolutely. I'd love to speak on that. To the best of my knowledge, I'm not an expert on it, but I'm trying to, trying to educate myself as quick as possible. We did have a Fire Safe Community prior, kind of basically disbanded. We're looking to implement that again. And it is basically, for us, would be a force multiplier. Again, we would partner with that group to help educate the community. They can be at all the events that we're at, distributing the same publications that we're doing, be trained to talk to people about, you know, mitigating the vegetation hazards that they have around their, their homes, home hardening, all the things that, that we, we look to, and that's really what's going to help us survive these fires. We're looking at that. I do, both Captain Bertrand and myself have been talking with some residents. We do have a, a couple of our residents that are a hundred percent on this and are willing to be on the board and start this up. Got a little delayed with the last couple of weeks, but we've been in contact with them, and more than ever, we're eager to get this going. So we're looking at the possibilities of trying to do at least a Fire Department type of town hall to talk about some of these things and invite these folks in, and then get some residents in there, and hopefully we can, we can solicit some enrollments on that. The Fire Wise Community, for lack of better terms, is kind of like a neighborhood, neighborhood watch program. So it can range, a community can range anywhere from five to, five or six to thirty homes. So basically, a block would be its own community. There's a lot of benefits to both. The Fire Safe Council, again, as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, can get a lot of funding that we can't get a hold of to help private residents and, and, and everybody. They can distribute the money to the Fire Wise Communities. And so when we talk about, again, retrofitting our homes to kind of hope, you know, cover up some of the screenings under our ease, or, or change the siding, or whatever the case is, the city, we're, we're pretty much hamstrung to not being able to help with that. We can't get the funding for private residents, but these groups can. And so we're really trying to, to get some steam on that and try to partner with them to help them out. There's just a lot of benefits that will come with that. To include, if we can get our city recognized as Fire Wise Communities, that, to my understanding, with all the seminars I've attended, and I believe you've attended the same things, is hopefully, not only can you get insurance, but you can get rate cuts on your insurance by our community being recognized as a Fire Wise Community.
So if.
Big benefits to everybody.
If someone's on the fair plan up in, in the, in the canyon area or north of Grandview, if we had a Fire Wise Community, they might be able to get, there may be an insurance company that would want to come in, and they'd be able to get, is that kind of the direction? I know we can't say for certain, because there's so much up in the air, but is that kind of the direction that may be a possibility?
That is my understanding. It's looked favorably upon in the fact that our residents and our neighbor and our community are looking to make improvements, and they are making the improvements. So if they can track some of the things that they're doing as far as mitigation efforts, that's where they can now, hopefully. And of course, we're working on this at many levels, on the Cal, Cal Chiefs levels, on the League of California Cities. Everybody's talking to the electeds, trying to get, you know, the insurance commissioner to take a look at all this stuff, and, and finally have fire departments have a say in this, right? We're doing a lot of work within our communities to, to make us safer, and the insurance companies aren't recognizing it yet. So with these efforts, we stand, I'll put it this way, we stand a better chance than not, for sure. And at the very least, your, your property will be better protected.
Thank you for your leadership and the answers. So if someone does want to volunteer to be on the Fire Safe Council or be a part of a Fire Wise Community, how do they find out? Do they contact? Is there a webpage, an email address, a phone number? What's the best way for them to, to express interest on it?
The best way to do it is, is to reach out to us at the Fire Department at, at our email address, so fire@sierraamadreca.gov. There should still be some stuff on the city's website where we, and there's pamphlets right out here in the lobby that says, you know, we want you. So there's information on there as well, or just call the Fire Department, and we're more than happy to point everybody in the right direction.
So call the Fire Department or fire@sierraamadreca.gov?
Correct.
Great. Then the other question is, we've got a number of residents that have reached out. I was up in the canyon over the weekend, and there was a community meeting there. We've got some people that have ideas and questions and thoughts. There's one here, a gentleman who's a, an inventor who has some ideas on FOSS check that might be able to be used. Is that something that we can route to you, or is there someone else in your team that, or is it in Public Works that can take a look at this and evaluate the potential ways to, to prevent or reduce erosion?
Absolutely. More than happy to take a look at it. If we can not address it, we'll find somebody that can.
Great. I'm going to leave this here for you at the end of the meeting. If, if we can get that to you, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you so much. Any other?
Mr. Mayor, just, just on your, your question, maybe it was eight, nine months ago, myself, Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilmember Krebs did tour our community with CAL FIRE. And it was affirmed at that time from representatives of CAL FIRE that they have experienced Fire Wise Communities that did receive insurance or insurance reductions. So it's not only the word of the chief, it was also the word of CAL FIRE.
Thank you for that.
And the only way that some of these funds can be accessed, even for our city, is if we have a Fire Safe Council and we're Fire Wise. Otherwise, we don't even get brought up to the table. And right at that time also, we heard that Nature Friends had applied for a grant at that time for mitigation efforts for landscape, and they were turned away because we don't have a Fire Safe Council.
And someone has to form a 501(c)(3).
Yes, it can't be the city. It has to be the community.
It can't be the city, it has to be the community.
Yes.
So, yes. We'll, we'll let you go here in just a second, but I think Councilmember, our Mayor Pro Tem Lo, had said, you know, very quickly that they got the, the announcement out. I just want to, I found it here on my phone. We heard six-eighteen is when the, the fire started. By six-forty-three, there was a, the police department got out a, an announcement, and by nine-twenty-three, the mandatory orders went out. So you can just see how quickly our team, or the city's team acted to, to, to make this happen. So again, thank you so much for, for everybody's efforts in keeping us safe.
A pleasure. Thank you.
So next, we'll bring up Police Chief Barrientos.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council. First, I want to extend my sincere gratitude to the men and women of the Sierra Madre Police Department, Fire Department, city staff, outside agencies, law enforcement agencies, search and rescue, volunteers, and the National Guard, for their dedicated efforts during the Eaton Fire. Their professionalism and commitment were instrumental in ensuring the safety of our community. So I'll provide kind of an overview of where we're at. On the evening of the fire, the Police Department, Sierra Madre Police Department facilitated the evacuation of two-thirds of the city. North of Sierra Madre Boulevard, this is throughout the city. This is from San Anita down to Michelinda. The Emergency Operations Center, the EOC, was activated promptly, and we requested Area D disaster assistance or mutual aid. Over fifty officers from our neighboring cities assisted at Sierra Madre Police Department with the evacuations. After the evacuations were completed, we transitioned to securing the evacuated areas with fixed posts and extra patrols north of Sierra Madre Boulevard. This increased presence deterred crime activity and ensured the safety of property. Several days later, we began the careful and organized process of repopulating. Areas areas north of Sierra Madre Boulevard to Grandview. Units were then redeployed to fixed posts throughout Grandview for Michelinda and Santa Anita, maintaining a strong presence with both fixed posts and roaming units. The National Guard provided additional support at these posts, further bolstering our security efforts. Throughout the incident, Sierra Madre Police Department remained at maximum deployment, addressing calls for service across the city while maintaining checkpoints and ensuring that only residents access the restricted areas. Once the threat north of Grandview diminished, we assisted with the gradual and safe repopulation of the city while continuing to operate fixed posts and maintain a visible presence to reassure our residents. As the situation stabilized, outside units, law enforcement units returned to their respective areas, but we maintained maximum deployment and the presence of the National Guard until Friday of last week for added security. Since then, we have assisted the YMCA in their efforts and returned to near-normal operations. However, we remain vigilant to ensure public safety as that being our top priority. And finally, or lastly, I don't want to say lastly, I want to thank the city management, mayor, city council, and our community for their unwavering support during this challenging situation. It was their cooperation and resilience that was vital in our efforts. This concludes, and I will open it up to questions.
Thank you, Police Chief. Questions?
I have one question about evacuations, and I don't even know, I didn't think about it until now, but I know that your personnel came through so effectively, and they could hear the sirens, I think, the most during the chaos of when we could hear things. So for people that didn't, you see, that aren't on NICSOL and not on Genesis yet, they were hearing sirens, and then they were trying to look around what was, and then, did you see, would you see any need to enhance how you're able to conduct evacuations? Did you see that, that I know a lot of neighbors helped neighbors, I've heard of people calling each other up and saying, "I need help getting my suitcase out," and knocking on each other's doors and helping. Did you see any other need that you would implement in the future that would help your personnel help with evacuations?
I think the needs, we have them in place, meaning, I was just talking to one of our great residents here from the city, is I think anybody, everybody, and all of our residents need to participate in the Genesis, in the NICSOL, have both the email and the text message feature. I think we started our evacuations early. I think that's what saved lives. And I think that form of messaging, I think we did a phenomenal job with Laura Aguilar, our PIO, of posting information out there that was real-time, giving clear direction, given the magnitude of the situation. So we did both sirens, PA systems, and then door-to-door door knocks to evacuate as we got more resources. Fortunately, once Area D is activated, we get assistance of up to 47 different law enforcement agencies. Usually, they come locally, and within the hour, we had about 50. So Area D, when that's activated, we get 50% of uniform deployment from all of our local agencies. So they automatically have to deploy 50% of the patrol force to Sierra Madre. So if you have 10 units in Arcadia, five of those units need to come here, and it's immediate. So I think with the assistance of our law enforcement partners, we were able to safely evacuate our residents in a timely manner.
How, just curious, how does that go with, when you have other, like, cities, like, how do they know where to go?
So we had already activated our EOC. So it goes through Area D, Diana Monzano sends out an email and a text message to all the chiefs via email and text, basically giving them instructions of where to report. Once they reported the EOC, the Incident Command System takes place. We're fortunate enough, we have some, Sergeant Cal Bailey who's here, who has some experience, including a former lieutenant from the Sheriff's, Sergeant Yokayama, who took charge, who are capable and well-versed on the Incident Command System. So that facilitated the quick deployment of our units out to the field to immediately evacuate our residents.
I meant, how do they know which city to, how do they know to go to Altadena, Pasadena, or Sierra Madre?
So it'll say, in the message, it'll say, so the LA County handles their EOC separate, our EOC is separate. So mutual aid gives clear direction to respond, to assist. So we make the request, and the request is only for Sierra Madre, not LA County.
Thank you, thank you. It makes sense.
Great. Other questions? Yes?
This is a question, but I have to say, as I was glued to the TV for, you know, 36 hours, one of the things that I wanted to commend, both your team as well as the help that we got, and particularly our residents, we had a reporter in our canyon, I think on Wednesday afternoon, and he commented on air the difference in the response to the evacuation orders and the various places he had been that day to report on the news. And he said in his experience that the, you know, the Sierra Madre locations had immense participation in the evacuation, he called it a ghost town, as compared to other places he had been that had been evacuated and folks had not complied with the evacuation orders. So I just really wanted to commend your efforts and the response of the community, because I really think also the response that we had from our community and the response to the evacuation orders also, I think, saved lives. I didn't know if you had heard that feedback in terms of the perception of the compliance with the evacuation orders.
I know that in one of the news medias, we were being commended for our efforts and the participation from our community and our law enforcement partners in the evacuation of our residents. I think it's communication, cohesiveness, community, all of that just kind of worked in our favor.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Just, I just wanted to mention, yeah, that the response was tremendous. And I think it may have been two or three meetings ago when I reported out from the League of California Cities meeting that I attended a session with representatives, I think it was a Santiago fire, and Deputy City Manager Aguilar was with me. And just going forward, things to think about, and the thing that they said was very effective was the use of a high-low siren, because that's not a normal siren, and it alerts people in communities if they know, right? To then look at NICSOL, be prepared to look at the NICSOL, Genesis, all those other things, hopefully AM 1630, if we can get that going as well. Just things to think about in the future. I think we did an exemplary job. But as Chief Bartlett said, we can always do better. So, and I know city managers are open to all these things. Different modes of communication to our residents are paramount. But again, I just want to give kudos to everybody, including our residents. Could be unsettling when people show up with machine guns, but our residents were very receptive to the National Guard, and we felt at peace when we're evacuated that our property was going to be, was going to be protected. So I just want to thank you and everybody that responded as a resident and a council member for the response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, next, if there's no further questions, I'll invite Public Works Director Inez and Senior Management Analyst Carlson.
And could I also make a request? We have a sign for the Genesis and all of that. There's a sign somewhere. If a staff person can grab that and bring it out, I think that would be really helpful to have it down here as a good reminder. It's got QR codes on it. Director Inez, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. I want to update you on current efforts that the Public Works Department is currently working on during these unprecedented events. Number one, potential mud and debris flow. Plans, drawing plans have been created and are currently under my supervision. Mudflow in the affected areas. I have been working with former Director of Public Works, Mr. Chris Semino. I am utilizing his many years of experience with mudflow here in Sierra Madre, along with attending daily meetings with the Los Angeles County Public Works Department and their civil engineers, and meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers on a daily basis. Public Works staff will begin to install K rails. These are concrete walls. You've seen them on the highways. As early as tomorrow morning. To be installed in the designated areas in the northern part of the city. The city has in stock currently 28 K rails, and they are ready for use. An additional order of K rails has been placed, and I expect them to be arrived as early as next week. An additional 20 to 25 K rails. Sandbags are in stock. I currently have 3,000 filled sandbags at our city yard. These will be used for public works staff to place at designated areas or unexpected emergency areas throughout town. An additional 10,000 sandbags have been ordered, and I expect for them to arrive tomorrow morning at our city yard. Public Works staff will continue to clean and pick up large debris throughout our city on a daily basis. I have contacted Merchants Landscape, who is our current contractor, and Patrick, the owner of the company, has been very generous in assisting us, and he said, "Our no fault, whatever you need." So he has added additional three staff members to come and assist us in driving around town and collecting large debris. So I'm very thankful to Merchants Landscape. Currently, I've been working with the Los Angeles County Public Works Department, and these are their hydraulic engineers. We do have a dam here in place. We have a dam here in Sierra Madre. The dam was built in 1920s. The designs from back in those days do not meet today's codes and standards. What I mean by that is the amount of debris that is expected to settle behind the dam. The current plan is for the Department of Public Works, along with the County Department of Public Works, to clean out behind the dam. This will be a long process. It'll be one of many. Each phase will take about two to three weeks. The first initial debris cleaning will take place on the 27th. Weather permitting, early on 27th, LA County Public Works Department will be removing debris from the rear of the dam. A design has been created to, a traffic route has been created. So we will be working with the police department to post no parking signs. Heavy machinery, heavy trucks will be going up through designated areas and then taking the debris out of our town to another designated area. At this time, this is my report for this evening. At this time, I will address any questions, concerns you may have.
Questions? Yes, Councilmember Crebs?
I understand, I think we put this out in various forms of communication, but I understand that residents individually can also be in contact with county public works about an assessment of their particular property if they have concerns about mudflow. I think there's a phone number they can call or a website that they can go to to request that, is that the case?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. Also, earlier this week, actually this morning, I spoke to a fellow engineer, Mr. Zimmerman, who this afternoon dropped off some information brochures for us to distribute, along to be provided, to be posted on our website.
All right. I always forget your title. Sorry, Deputy City Manager Aguilar just handed me that same. And so I'll just read this into the record, that the hotline, the mudflow hotline for the county is 1-800-933-0930. And this is, again, for individual residents who have concerns about mudflow based on, you know, concerns over the fire impact. And then my other question was, in terms of the debris clearing from our dam, you know, we've done this a couple of times, and obviously, there are other settling basins around our area. What's the timeframe, given what the amount of debris? How long do we expect the county to need to be able to clear it out to a certain standard?
Two to three weeks, ma'am.
May I follow that up?
Yes, please. What is the, can you say what percentage of that, behind that dam right now is full? Any kind of a estimate?
We don't have an estimate. I will have those numbers by tomorrow. Staff, LA County Public Works staff was out there today.
Because I'm thinking, it couldn't be too full, because we haven't had-
That is correct.
Haven't had the bare bills for a while.
On average, from 25 to 30%.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question too for that area. What area were you speaking of that would be having parking restrictions, or what path would they be taking?
I'm talking about northern part of the canyon, woodland, that area there.
Northern part of the lower canyon?
Correct.
Okay. And then my other question is, once we have, you know, we have anticipated rain this weekend, where can residents get sandbags and sand?
With the sandbags arriving tomorrow morning, we'll be working with our fire chief. A key location is the firehouse. It's in the center of town, easy, along with at our city yard.
Okay, so is that, are they pre-filled? Do they have to get the bag and then go get sand? What?
We'll have both unfilled bags there, along with the sand.
Okay, thank you so much.
And I'll just follow up on that one. There was, some of the owners on a lot up on Skyland have asked if they can use, one of the lots, I think, was one that burned down, or one that's vacant, to stage some sandbags up there. I think, City Manager, you're aware of that. I don't know where the assessment is on that, but could you update us on that?
Certainly. So, a couple of things. So I am working to get permission from the property owner to place some pre-filled sandbags. Public Works Director is aware of that. We also want to make sure that, because we know that there's going to be a lot of activity in that 800-block area of Skyland, that placing sandbags there is not going to interfere with Public Works or other key staff as they have to work in. A couple of details that we're working out. And then back to Mayor Protem Low's question. Access to the Santa Dam is through the upper canyon.
Okay.
And so, they will be providing their route. I would imagine that the majority of it's going to come up to the upper canyon. That's where their gate is, and there will be some activity as they stage in the lower canyon as well. But the big, heavy equipment, I anticipate, is going to come through the upper canyon.
Some of those questions got asked and answered, but I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking going forward as, who knows if we'll have a rainy season this year, but if we do, thinking of K rails and anchoring K rails and all those things, I know you have a background in engineering, but do we have help to have an understanding of how to properly anchor? And maybe even a word to the residents, if it's a rain event. There's a lot of potential energy that will stack up behind these K rails, and they can move. So any suggestions to residents, if we have a rain and mudflow event? And also, do we have any help on the engineering side of things to try to shore those K rails up so the energy doesn't actually upend those big, heavy pieces of concrete?
Excellent question, sir. That's why I'm working closely with La Jolla County Public Works, along with the Army Corps of Engineers. The foothills are a very unique set of mountains. The topography is very similar, ups and downs. Our here in Sierra Madre is very specific as to some very deep wedges, very deep wedges. But you're right, anchoring them both on both ends along in the center. And these are some serious long boats and anchors. But it doesn't matter how long that boat is, or how secure. The amount of pressure and weight, the physics just sometimes just takes over. And it's very possible that the K rails can be moved by the amount of pressure and weight.
If I may expand, we do have a contract with, I believe it's KNA Engineering and Civil, he's a civil engineer, and he's working with, he was actually a former Public Works Director for the city of Sierra Madre, former city of Sierra Madre engineer. And he is the civil that's working with Public Works Director Semino, who has the institutional knowledge of where mudflows tend to happen in town. And so they're working together to put the K rail strategy in place. And one of the things that we did talk about was how to properly anchor the K rails. So that is something that's being considered as well.
Right.
And then I wanted to get back to Councilmember Crebs' comment about the mud hotline. My understanding is that if a resident calls the 1-800-county hotline, within 48 hours, a county engineer will contact our residents to set up an appointment to visit their property and look at the hydrology of their property and give the resident a plan to mitigate mudflows on property.
Thank you.
And that number is 24/7, is it not?
That number is 24/7, so residents would call, leave their information, address, phone number, and a county representative will call them back within 48 hours.
And I just want to echo what you said, Deputy Director, or Director, Inez, sorry. It's so- It's so so tempting that we all, we all have our own production, uh, we film things, right? And there's a sense of security when you see a K rail and we, let's say that's working effectively. Um, I, I'm assuming we're encouraging our residents, if there's an active mud flow, yes, we're going to anchor these, these K rails, but, but don't trust the anchor, don't stand behind it, get out of the way, um, be safe. And it's, you would say common sense, but again, we, we have a sense of security when we see a barrier. And I can see, hopefully, nobody would stand in front of one of those during an event. Just wanted to get that out there.
Can I add a follow-up question to that? Do we have, um, any information for our public on what to do during a mud flow? Because being someone who experienced the last mud flow, I don't know if people realize that it, not only can it move like a K rail, it, you cannot move. If you're in the path of it, you, as a physical human being, are stuck wherever you're at, and you cannot move beyond that. You step into it and you just have to avoid the whole area. But I don't even know if our public is necessarily trained on what to do with that. And do we have, do we have a plan ready for evacuation orders? I mean, we've seen what mud flow has done to carpentaria. We've seen what it's done to, um, Chiquita. And, I mean, it's deadly.
That, that is, that is now, again, an excellent question. Uh, Councilmember Garcia, safety is first. Uh, and that's something that, that I promote to, to staff, and I encourage staff, uh, that we promote that when we're out and about, uh, conducting business. Mayor Protem, I, that is something that I, I'm taking notes and will look into with, with our, our partners in LA County to see if there's something already in publication, uh, for us to, to use.
And with the fire department, I'm sure.
And with the fire department, of course.
Other questions for Director Yanez? Thank you very much. Uh, do we have Management Analyst Carrot Carlson next?
Just good evening, uh, Mayor and, and Council. I'll give you a quick update on a couple of topics that, uh, I've, I follow really closely. One is trash, one is wildlife, and then I'll also add a little bit to the partnership and the relationship with LA County, um, Public Works. Um, we are urging our residents and our commercial owners to please continue to use Athens for private household and commercial waste. We made the decision at the beginning not to, um, change Athens pickup. We understood they wouldn't be able to get to some places, didn't want to confuse everybody with new schedules, new processes. It's just going to take a little bit of time, but I've, I've really noticed that, you know, it might take two pickups, it might take two weeks, but our residents are being very patient. They're really pitching in the help, and they understand their role in, you know, this recovery on that part. Uh, we will continue with the spoiled food bins at San, at Sierra Vista Park. Uh, we're working with Athens closely to make sure that they're picked up a little bit more promptly and responsibly. Um, also, street sweeping is now on hold until further notice. Uh, in regards to wildlife, um, I was in contact with a, a local wildlife biologist the first week of the fire because I was already getting questions about our wildlife. In a nutshell, she explained to me that coyotes are going to do whatever they want. They're unpredictable. They're just going to keep being coyotes. Large mammals such as deer, bear, and mountain lions are going to generally stay away for another three or four weeks. That doesn't mean you won't have exceptions to this rule, and you might still see some of these animals. But after three to four weeks, they then come back looking for that easy food. So that's when we, that's just a, a nutshell of what we can expect with our wildlife. Um, my friend also put me in contact, and now we, and it was just today. Uh, we are receiving resources from the Wildlife Disaster Network, as well as members of UC Davis Wildlife Team. Uh, these resources will be disseminated through our publicity with a lot of our other messaging and such. In our relationship with, uh, LA County Public Works and Flood Control, I got to sit in on the watershed meeting today at ten o'clock. And I was having flashbacks. It was all coming back to me. And so at our one o'clock executive team meeting, I said, "You know, it's really looking like it did in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Here's an idea of what we might expect." And subsequently, um, City Manager Reno so said, "Hey, add that to what you're going to tell the city council." Uh, I learned this morning that the flood flow maps are going to be available to us Friday. And that is, uh, an amazing, um, resource for us. Uh, back after Santa Anita Fire, we waited considerably longer to get our localized flood maps. And to realize that the county engineers, the hydrologists, the water modelers are going to have these maps available to Palisades and Eaton this Friday is tremendous. Now, um, we expect to get their map of Eaton Canyon, uh, fire area, um, and Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. Phase Three being the most dire. That's what we got last time. Back in two thousand eight, we aligned these notifications, these forecasts. Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three was green flag, yellow flag, red flag. Also aligned with ready, set, go. So it gives you an idea of the approach at least. We were still, you know, going to have to see what these look like. But that's going to be probably the approach that we, we carry on going forward. The county will, um, do forecasts upon any, uh, forecast of precipitation. We will get seventy-two hour notice, forty-eight hour notice, twelve hour notice, telling us what phase they think Sierra Madre will be in. Um, we may be bifurcated by sections. It could be Sierra Madre Canyon, Phase One. Western portions of Sierra Madre, no phase, or Phase Two. Uh, I don't know that for sure yet, but, um, that's why I'm really anxious to see what happens on Friday. So that's just a preview of what I think we're looking at, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for, go ahead.
Thank you very much for your update, especially on the wildlife. I think there's been, um, now that I think the human element of this has largely been settled in terms of, um, safety and, and people back in their homes. There's been, I think, a, a attention turned to the wildlife. I'll just ask it frankly. Um, should, and should residents be feeding or watering our wildlife?
No, they should not.
Thank you. Um, and then the other question I had is in, um, in terms of the, um, flood modeling that you were just talking about. Um, I think it was mentioned earlier, and people probably know that there is some precipitation forecasted for this weekend. And I don't know if part of what they'd covered in today's meeting was preparation for that and whether there was any, um, change in sort of the, the, uh, forecast in terms of the amount or the intensity of the, of the event for this weekend.
Yeah, the, the, the meeting did have a, a relatively short section on the weather forecasting. They also indicated that, you know, these maps and these individual engineering, um, plans are not going to be ready for the relatively small amount of precipitation they're expecting. Um, we've talked internally and even with some partners in other communities, and it's almost the best thing that we could hope for is to get a very small, short event and just see the areas of the town that might slide, you know? Um, we're going to get all of these maps and all of these forecasts and all of these engineer, um, recommendations, but just to get a taste of the areas that move will be kind of, actually kind of beneficial for us.
Other questions?
Can I ask a naive question? Does, would our debris cleanup be, unlike even personal homes, be under planning or be under Public Works?
It's, it's pretty much, uh, a, a role of Public Works to coordinate private planning and protection with experts, generally from LA County. So I, I, I see this as more of a coordination. Um, you, Director Yanez and, and Samino are already out there. There's intuitive places. We know we got to shore up. That's why that's happening now. The maps are going to give us a lot of new information when those arrive.
So then people, private residents that do have damage and have issues, not just with the, the debris landscape issue and the mudslides, would they also refer questions to Public Works or Planning Department?
So if you're talking about burnt structures, so, so, uh, anything that, any structure that burned a house, garage, an ADU, and, and I think, uh, one of our residents had some questions about this. So, um, it's going to, it's going to be done in, in a minimum of two phases, maybe up to three phases. Phase One is mandatory. Residents cannot opt out of this. Phase One cleanup will be conducted by the EPA, and they're going to remove all hazardous materials. That includes, uh, solar panels that have melted, battery packs, if there was an electric vehicle, um, any paint, propane tanks. Anything that's hazardous is going to occur, um, in Phase One, conducted by the EPA. Phase Two is either going to be utilities, gas, electric, water, disconnecting their, their services to then allow Phase Three, which will be the Army Corps of Engineers coming to remove all remaining debris from the property six inches below current, current grade, um, and may include the foundations. So President Biden uh, approved one hundred percent of reimbursement for this type of work for the first one hundred and eighty days. And we're hoping that, um, President Trump, um, keeps it that way. Um, if it goes beyond the hundred and eighty days, um, the Fed could reduce it to seventy-five percent. Where California, the state of California would then pick up eighteen and a quarter percent, and the city would be responsible for six and three quarters percent. Residents, residents do have the option to opt out and do their own for Phase Two and Phase Three. From what I understand, most insurance policies only cover about twenty-five thousand dollars for that work. FEMA has indicated to me that, that the total cleanup per site is estimated at a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So i- i- if, if the residents are patient and they can wait for the process, there's a considerable savings.
To follow up on that, um, I generally don't check my phone from the dais, but I, I did. There was a resident, um, there was just like the Richardson's, is that correct? Um, their next, the next door neighbor, uh, the residence is completely gone. Um, toxins, right, uh, and their ADU in their own house is gone. And so they can't occupy their own house right now until those toxins are gone. They want to know, is there a li, uh, is there a list they can get on for the EPA to kind of fast-track those people that are still out of their homes because of these toxins? Or does the EPA, we just have to wait until the, because EPA knows about each one of these sites and they'll show up? And is, is it after the EPA cleanup that they can, uh, repopulate their homes?
So, right now, we have eight task force that have been put in place. Debris, watershed, planning, rebuilding, uh, economic development, landscape. Um, and each, we have different staff members assigned to each one of these task forces that meet on a daily basis for an hour. Planning, uh, Planning Manager Lynn is going to talk about some of those in her, in her update.
Okay, great. I did, I, I wanted to wait, but, uh, I wasn't sure, but since we were talking about it.
I was getting very confused on which one's planning, which is Public Works, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
So it was not a naive question, because I had the same, you've got three people that had the same question.
Thank you.
So, um, other questions? Um, I, I had one again. I think it may be in, I am not sure if it's, if it's planning or if it's Public Works. Uh, the, the Richardson's asked, uh, about, uh, planting and what plants to plant. Um, is there any guidance out there? Where can we find the guidance? Who, who's, who's the right person that, that has that? Is, is, is there a, a document that people can turn to?
So LA County does have a document. It's in their mud flow, um, debris and mud flow guide. It talks to residents about how to prepare their home for mud flow, and it also talks about what steps to take and what, some of the recommended vegetation. Again, a lot of this, the seeds, um, through the natural fire process, um, get released. And the process naturally takes up to five years to happen.
I think their question was more about fire-safe vegetation as well, and during that Cal Fire visit, they actually referred us to Cal Fire's website, and I pulled it up so I can email it to you guys. But it's, um, Fire Smart Landscaping, and it's specifically under Ready For Wildlife dot org, and it's on their Cal Fire site. So it's an amazing thing that talks about fire-smart landscaping and what plants and tips and such, so.
Something to keep in mind is that if we replant now or reseed now, the first rains are going to wash that down because the roots don't have time to establish themselves. So the roots are just, it's just going to get uprooted and potentially clog, uh, storm drains or get in the way of things. So, uh, the best thing to do is, is download that resource guide from LA County's website, from their debris and mud flow webpage. Uh, we do have it. I think we did post it on, on, on our social media. And if we haven't done so, we'll make sure to do so.
Uh, City Manager Reno, so I've also been, um, uh, in contact with Form LA. They did the model fire-safe landscaping that's out by the Public Safety Building, and they're anxious to help. I bet they do some workshops.
Management Analyst Carlson, thank you. Um, one question, so, um, I think you've already answered it, but um, for some reason, I've, I've accumulated a lot of green cans, and every single one of them is full, as well as about nine sixty-gallon bags, because ahead of this wind event, I wanted to clear all debris from sides of structures and told my landscaper, "Don't come around with a blower." So, um, I have a lot of debris sitting on the side of my yard. Is, are the dumpsters at Sierra Vista Park only for spoiled food, or is it for all organics? Uh, and I think you said what we should do is wait and put this stuff out in stages.
Well, City Manager Reno and I, we talked about that a little bit, and we're going to go, we're going to watch it. We, we kind of think that maybe that spoiled food waste, uh, amount is, is dropping, you know? People have been in, they've cleaned out their fridge. Then they would become a, a, a place for regular green waste. But we want to kind of check with Athens a little bit on that first, take a look at, uh, you know, what's going in there now, and we'll probably, hopefully be able to make the announcement that, "Take your green waste there now."
And not to mention, I still have my Christmas tree, because there was no time to. So I'm sure a lot of residents, I'm sure a lot of residents are in the same place I am, with, with big pieces of property.
Um, speaking of Athens and trash pickup, um, when we were at the YMCA yesterday and their efforts, uh, one of the things that they, and they probably reached out as well, but I just want to make a, a public plea, um, that when you are in contact with Athens, that you ask that they maybe do a little bit extra pickup around the, the, uh, relief center there, because I think they're generating a fair amount of trash, and that's becoming a little bit of a problem, they had said, so.
Yeah, we've spoken to Athens about that situation.
Great, thank you.
And, and if we could, um, Clerk Aguilar, if you could hold up that, that one that has the picture of the, the guide, and we get it on, on camera there. That, that, that document is, is, I think fifty or so pages long, or you can pass it here. I don't think this is the full document, but for those at home, uh, if we can get the camera on it. Um, this is the, if you're looking for it, this is, there we go, thank you. This is what the, the guide looks like, so, uh, if you're looking for it, um, that's, you know, you should recognize it when you go see it. And it's about fifty-one pages long. All right. Any other questions for, uh, Ann's Carlson? Great.
So next up will be Water Superintendent McGee and IT Manager Malon.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Honorable Counsel. Just before I start, just a little, going back to what they were talking about. Another asset we do have is that we do have a lot of senior staff that has worked on mud deblow, debris flows. Uh, as well as our, our Navo and, uh, former Director Samino. A lot of our staff has, has had the experience of, of going through that kind of event. So, um, just to alleviate some of the, the city's minds that we do have people that have worked on this, so. Um, here to talk a little bit, update about the recent water conditions and the ongoing actions. When we first prepared for this, it was a, a wind event, and we did do the due diligence that we do on these events of filling our reservoirs to maximum capacity. In the, uh, assessment that we might have no power, and we have to facilitate the city for a couple of days. Fire came and went, and, and the fire department and all the staff did a great job. And water was notified on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five that the city was going to have to issue a do not drink, do not boil water advisory to its residents in Zone Three, um, following a directive from the state. Prior to this order, test results confirmed that all coliform bacteria, uh, samples were negative and adequate disinfectant residual levels were, uh, consistently maintained throughout the system. Uh, additionally, staff verified that there was no loss of pressure in our distribution system, as evident by the, the water levels of the tanks. All tanks, but especially the tanks that serve that, that zone, which are the Auburn reservoirs. With all this, uh, information, the state still issued a precautionary advisory due to the presence of burnt structures in the, connected to our city's water system in that area. To address this situation, city staff is going, is working with, uh, WQTS, which is Water Quality Treatment Solutions. Um, they've done some work for, they're an outside third party that's done some work for us in the past, uh, to contract them to do, develop a comprehensive monitoring plan aimed at assessing and addressing the contaminant risk. Specifically, the presence of benzene stemming from burnt structures connected to the city's water system. A plan was drafted and submitted to the State Water Resources Control A plan was drafted and submitted to the State Water Resources Control Board and approved by the Division of Drinking Water's representative. This happened on Friday, plan went out. Prior to the plan even being approved, city staff was already out working on developing sample locations for the testing. We worked diligently as soon as the fires had cleared through and we could get into some of these areas to pull meters and cap locations at the fire locations that the structures that did burn. So we acted on that before direction, hearing about other places such as Altadena conducting the same thing. So we worked in advance to do those kind of things. But we were out getting locations for the samples, so when this plan was put together, we'd be able to roll on it. The plan was approved, we were given several days to let the water kind of sit in the system so we can get a representative of the sample. With that plan approved, the city initiated sample procedures in the affected areas. Today, staff conducted first rounds of sampling, which included a full VOC panel and bacteriological tests. The state asked for benzene sampling, we're giving a full VOC panel. We're going to go above and beyond and test for the full VOC in the locations what we are sampling at. These samples that we took today have been delivered to a certified third-party laboratory for analysts. Tomorrow, the city will conduct an additional round of bacteriological sampling. Once this second round of sampling is complete, the city will post this monitoring plan on the city's website. The reason for releasing the monitoring plan after the samples were completed was to ensure the integrity of the sample locations could not be tampered with in any way. The laboratory results are expected within five to seven days. Once these results are received, they will be reviewed and submitted to the state for further guidance. I want to assure the city remains committed to transparency and prioritizing the safety of its residents. I will take any questions on anything to do with the water system.
Questions for Superintendent McGee.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So having an understanding of, we talked a lot about zones and Genesis zones, and the Genesis zones are used in watch duty. Then we hear Zone Three, we have a Genesis Zone Three, but we also have a Water Zone Three. So could you just explain kind of the segregation of our three zones and whether or not it's, we're looking at Genesis Zone Three or Water Zone Three for our residents?
That's a great question. Yes, we, when dealing with the fire initially, we're dealing with Genesis zones. In the city of Sar Madre, at all times, you're dealing with what zone you live in for where your water comes from. So it's a gravity-filled system, so you have to pump water up to one of the reservoirs in order to create the pressure that you have in your system. So where you live in the system is your pressure always. So we get people that say, like, oh, my pressure was going up and down, and I go, can't do that. It's, as long as there's water in the reservoir, your system, the gravity system provides that pressure whether you're the top of the zone or the bottom of the zone. There are three zones. Zone One is controlled by the Miramonte Reservoir, Zone Two is controlled by the Grove Reservoir, and Zone Three is controlled by the Auburn Reservoirs. Yeah, that's how you get your pressure. And like we said, throughout this event, we raised the levels to maximum capacity that we could in order to make sure if we lost power for the wind event, well, it did two purposes. It provided us with, obviously, the amount of water we needed, plus we could obviously provide water for fire suppression as well.
Following up on that fire suppression portion, and this is just kudos to water and fire and planning and everybody that would plan for this, we did top off our reservoirs due to the wind event when we opened the VOC for the wind event. But it's my understanding, and we heard the horror stories about hydrants running dry in other communities. One of the benefits of being a small community, we were a little bit more flexible and we can do things quickly. It's my understanding that we were depleting the reservoir quicker than we could, we fill it with these super pumps that are called boosters, right? And somebody made the call, let's run two boosters, even though our system isn't designed to run two boosters, to keep pressure up in that reservoir. Is that an accurate representation of what happened?
You're pretty accurate. We can run, it's just the system, as I've come to you in the past few years, we're always trying to do infrastructure. It's not recommended because it adds a little bit of extra pressure to the system in that areas that we're used to pumping 1,275 GPMs going to Auburn. And if we pump another one on there, now we've got another, let's say, 1,000 GPMs on that. That's extra on those pipes, to use a luggy word. So it's not that we can't, it's that we don't want to, and we have skilled, I sit at the desk and I advise these guys, my crew knows what they're doing, they could do this in their sleep. They understand how trends work and how they can run one reservoir to another. You won't go up to the Miramonte Pump House and find a Grove Reservoir pump and a Auburn Reservoir pump running at the same time. They know, they know what they're doing in order to reduce that kind of efficiency of power we're using at that, they're skilled enough. So we know what we're doing from the experience of being here for a while and learning the trends. Those guys, yeah, they did a fantastic job. We could have, and we didn't have to. That's the good news.
So, but just coming back, the knowledge of our system, the fact that we have such knowledgeable employees that we want to retain, we were able to keep our hydrants filled while they're being, our reservoirs being depleted.
Yeah, I think there was a direct correlation. I think these individuals knew what they were doing, and before a directive came from, I mean, somebody like City Manager Reno, so who knows the water system, he didn't even have to. We knew what to do.
So thank you for that. Thank you.
Other questions? I have a couple. So you said you proactively filled the reservoirs and I think also the ponds, right, the filtering ponds there as well, is that correct?
That was just a lucky coincidence. No, so we use the, once again, the ponds that you see in the spreading basins, those are used for recharge. So we put the water in there for recharge. So everything is taken out of the ground, but we recharge the groundwater. It just so happens that we were pumping to those, and I think I made a comment to the mayor that it was a lucky coincidence that, you know, and kudos to, like I said, our ground fire staff, they did a tremendous job, but got to watch the air support come in and do their thing. And it's a pretty amazing thing when you can kind of point at those things and go, you can take water from there if you need it, right there. And the guy kind of, it was kind of, it's like a scene from, you know, one of those war movies where, yeah, they go to do stuff, and it was pretty amazing. But it was a coincidence. Our reservoirs are a different story. We control, we'd like to cycle them a little bit so we can get some fresh water in there, but our chlorine residuals, I mean, the structure we work with here makes it easy anyway to do that. Other systems are not so lucky that are outside of us that have to deal with disinfectant products, they can't, we can. But that's a normal thing, and that's, like I said, that is actually something I learned from my predecessor, and we hand up.
Great. So, and I think that's, you know, in the past two fires, we've had the opportunity to be able to help out the fire service by, you know, as you said, pointing them to the settling basin and say, take what you need.
Yeah, and also too, it was pretty, I don't have a better word for it other than cool, to see the Chief Bartlet come up to me, I believe it was Wednesday morning, take a knee in front of me and go, are you going to be able to provide me the water I need? And I could go, yeah, chief, we're going to take care of that. You just keep doing what you're doing. So, yeah.
So switching back to your first topic on the volatile organic compounds or VOCs, how do VOCs get in the water and kind of, what's some of the history? This is something that seems relatively new to the new fire risks that we've got. Can you talk a little bit about how water gets contaminated with VOCs from fire?
So I'll speak to our water system. And our water system is, we have natural occurring things in the ground through age, through things that might have been here in the past that occur in the ground, and we test for these things. So when we talk about a monitoring plan that we have going on, that we're developing with the state right now, we've had a monitoring plan for your sampling that we do on a weekly basis, that we develop, every couple of years, we do this monitoring plan, they update, they take a look at the numbers. So, you know, we assess those things that they see in the ground. One of the new ones coming up is we talk about PFOS, I'm sure you've heard of that kind of stuff. So they start talking about these things, and we have to sample for whatever. Our natural occurring things that we sample for in the ground are things like TCE, PCE. We know these are in the ground, we know that they're present. Our GACs that we have remove VOCs from source water. So we test those VOCs once a month to see that VOC, what the presence of it is, and we come back with a non-detect. So it's at a microbiological level, it's non-detect when it goes through those things. From source water into those VOC, into those GAC carbon filters, so big Brita filters, we have non-detect. And I'd like, I told City Manager Reno, I've actually had the longest non-detect of that in the past year and a half. It's been non-detect at the 75% port instead of moving generally down to the 100% port. So mostly it's, for us, it's natural occurring in the ground, but it could be something that existed in the past, textile plants, something like, something of that evidence. It usually is more as you move down into more of these lower-level areas that we see it, we don't see as much. As I said, we have two that we're regulated for at this point.
May I expand a little bit?
Please.
In Sar Madre, we're extremely fortunate that we take our water from the San Diego subarea of the Raven Basin, and because we're up against the foothills, there's no industrial pollutants. So we have a pretty pristine source of water that we draw from. VOCs, as Water Superintendent alluded to, is gasoline stations, textile plants that release, like in the Sangue River, they used to release into the Sangue River, they would carry out, that made it down into the groundwater table. So we, we've always, since I've been here, we've been non-detect when we do our source samples for volatile organic compounds. We did get a hit of TCE and PCE, and that was probably because of work that was done at the city yards at some point, or something that happened in the past. So when we look at structures that burned, VOCs comes in the form of PVC pipe, carpet, anything that's synthetic, that's man-made, that has petroleum-based products could potentially release VOCs when they ignite. So this, you alluded to, is relatively new. Some research was done after the Paradise Fire and some of the other fires that occurred more recently, and they discovered that in those systems, when pressure was lost, some of those got pulled into the water system. And so through that research, that's where that new law came into place, where if you have a wildfire of 300 acres or more and you have structures that burned, these additional tests are required.
And so it gets into the water if there's a loss in pressure? And so we didn't, did we have a loss in pressure?
So Superintendent McGee informed me that we did not have a loss in pressure, that we maintained system pressure throughout our distribution system for the entire event, and never lost pressure, and never suffered the compromise of any of our infrastructure or facilities. So Auburn is our top zone, it does require us to boost pressure into that zone. Zones Two and Zone Number One, which are lower, also have additional redundancy built into them. So Superintendent McGee can pump water directly into them, and he also has, he has built-in pressure sustaining valves within those lower systems to where if the pressure were to, if the reservoirs were to drop, and the pressure within those zones drops to a certain point, the higher pressure zone will automatically start to feed the lower pressure zone to keep those pressure zones pressurized. So there's redundancy in pumping, and there's redundancy in keeping the system pressurized through these pressure sustaining valves that are located strategically throughout the distribution system.
And because we didn't lose pressure, the likelihood of any VOCs from the fires to get in there is low, but we're doing this out of abundance of caution and to comply with state law, and our partners in the state to make sure that there isn't any issue. Is that a correct understanding of where we are?
The likelihood is low. Obviously, there is a likelihood, so in the event that something did get in, the water department would do some flushing of the system and retest until the VOCs drop to below the maximum contamination level before they put the system back online. But we're anticipating that there should be no issue.
We did go what I would believe to be above and beyond. They asked for 10% of our system that was affected, so that's the structures that were lost. And we gave them not only more, but distribution sites, reservoirs that they came from, so we're going to do a full VOC panel instead of just the benzene.
So as we typically do, and as our city does, we have a very well-run system. We're very lucky because we're pulling straight from the foothills, and we're going above and beyond in everything to make sure we ensure the safety of our water and our residents.
Yes.
Can I just follow up on that, just because I know the concerns that we're hearing from residents. Obviously, they're concerned about the safety of the water, but they're also concerned about the timeframe, you know, and when they might be able to begin to use their water as they're accustomed. To that point, I assume that the extra steps that we've taken in terms of the extra samples and the full VOC panel, that we did not expect to increase the timeframe for results and things like that. We just took that step to be extra safe, but we'll be on the same timeline, no matter the number of samples or the comprehensiveness of the sampling testing, correct?
That's a great question. Yes, I've been assured by our third-party laboratory that we will have those results at the timeframe. We were actually, at the beginning of this event, expecting possibly more, so they were given advance warning that might be a grander number, but working together and finding out exactly what the state was looking for. We have the number, we have an advanced number, and they've given us the timeline that is, you know, five to seven days.
So, and I want to touch on something. So Superintendent McGee talked about when we deliver water into the system, he delivers non-detect below MCL on VOCs. The state minimum requirement was benzene, right? If we know that the water that we put in the system is below the MCL, if some other VOC comes up above the MCL, we'll still be in do not drink until that VOC is flushed out. We're not going to turn the system back on to our residents until it's safe to drink.
So I wanted to find that, so when you're going to make the determination it's safe to drink, when we've done all these tests and we've cleared all these markers, do we have the capability to turn the system on unilaterally, or are there extended deadlines or guidelines we have to follow beyond that point before we can do it?
It's a great question. So we'll receive the results, and we will review them ourselves and present them within 48 hours to the DDW. Once those results are presented to them, I will take guidance from our representative in the Hollywood Division, and once he gives an okay, then we can, you don't have to really turn back.
So is there any reason to believe there would be any kind of significant delay once they've verified that we're good?
So they've worked very hard. I mean, I think we've had pretty good representation from our representative in the Hollywood Division. He's been very receptive, he's worked, he's worked well, more than well, with our representative that we hired to help us with this plan, to the point where I was able to kind of put them in contact with each other, and I act as just, what information do you need from me? I need to approve this, I need to look over this kind of thing like that. But when, I don't have to be the glitch in the matrix, they can talk to each other. It does allow us to work faster, I believe.
If I may add, one of the things that we talked about four years ago was the relationships that we have, and the Health Department is, there's no gray area. If there's a problem, they're going to shut your system down. When Stephen's going to get the results, those results also automatically go to the Health Department. So they're going to get them while Stephen's reviewing them, he has to submit them through his process, but the lab submits those directly to the Health Department. We don't, we don't see the, the lab, the Health Department will probably get them at the same time we do. Then he prepares his report and he'll submit it to the Health Department. Now, when I talk about relationships, is we've worked with our State Department Water Control Resource Engineers, they understand our water system. The engineer visits Stephen on a regular basis, inspects the facilities to make sure that everything's operating properly. And so he has that relationship to where he can call him on his cell phone and inform him, hey, we're all clear, can you please review it and let us know if we can proceed?
And he approved that plan on a Saturday, right?
Actually, it was, I'm sorry to cut in, but actually, he called me Wednesday morning of the fire. We spoke, we were in communication of how our water system was faring. We spoke again on Friday, and in both times, they completely supported our, you know, idea to keep the water system continuing to go. you know, idea to keep the water system continuing to go, until Saturday, when I believe they received more direction from the top. And that's the, when we started seeing the idea, that possibility of do not drink, do not boil, was gonna come. So we get that. But yeah, we were approved throughout that whole time.
Okay.
It just shows how things can change, and I believe the state was looking, what City Manager Reynoso said, they were looking for a precautionary. We keep using that word precautionary, precautionary. It's better to be precautionary or precautious than to not. So I support it in that, that way.
Great. Other questions? All right. Thank you, Superintendent McGee. IT Director, or IT Manager Milan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. There's so much that I wanna say, but I'll, I'll try to keep it brief. First, I'll start by saying that in my entire career, I don't think I've ever felt the weight of our responsibilities like we did during this event. You know, and, and I'll briefly just talk about the event as it was happening, and then kind of reflecting on the event after it was behind us from my perspective. During the event, you know, Stephen brought up the example of Chief taking a knee and asking, is our water, are you gonna be able to provide water for us? Right? And we saw the water running out in Palisades. And so the entire time, I'm thinking, I gotta keep the water infrastructure running, the SCADA system. Our Achilles' heel has been for a while power. We knew power was gonna go out. We proactively reinforced that position. We bought a ton of batteries. I think it's unusual for most IT departments to have more than a six to eight hour battery backup, because typically generators kick in. During the event, we, once we lost power, we were out for several hours, we saw our batteries beginning to drain. We saw that we had, you know, 10% left, which was about an hour of battery. On the fly, we repurposed equipment from City Hall, moved it to the yard at around 1:00 in the morning that night. It gave us another several hours of runtime. I was out there with city, uh, public work staff, turning on a generator to then recharge those batteries, because power was out. And, you know, these types of things happened through the entire night, you know? And I saw folks wearing hats that needed to be worn, no questions asked. I saw incredible collaboration amongst all departments. And I saw just dedicated staff doing what they could to make sure that we were taking care of our residents. Through this event, we did lose power, we got through it. And again, we never lost pressure in our, in our water system, but it's firefighters at the front line, Stephen and his crews, you know, managing the wells and the pumps, IT infrastructure, making sure that they have the control to be able to do that.
Really quick, do you mean you lost power at the?
At the city yard.
City yard, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And, you know, it's, it's, it's just an incredible effort, I think, from everyone, and it speaks to how well we work together, how we trust each other, and how we are dependent on each other. And honestly, I, I went home tired that first night, late, but I was very proud of just the effort, the dedication, the focus, the, like, like, just effort that went into making sure that everything was taken care of. And, and there were so many incidents like this, you know, from the CAT system, computer-aided dispatch for fire, computer-aided dispatch for police, all these systems have to work just right. There's just, I, I am convinced that as pervasive as technology is, and as much as we depend on technology on a daily basis, I am convinced that technology saved lives during this event. We also had radio system issues the day we saw the antenna swinging back and forth because of the high winds. We were worried about the satellite dish that connects our library to City Hall that makes it operational, sustaining 70, 80 mile winds. It's just on and on and on and on. And I, I, I mean, I just saw so much going on, and, and it, it was frankly inspiring. So with all that said, then we start kind of piecing everything together, and we start to reflect on what we can do to better. And so I've kind of switched gears to think about all the things that, you know, went wrong unexpectedly, some of the things that we, we did know that were a potential to, to happen, and then how do we recover, and how do we make it better and even more resilient than it was? And that's kind of where we're at today. And certainly for us, power is a big deal. If we lose power, it's, at this point, our Achilles' heel, we can't keep infrastructure running indefinitely without power. And even, like, the briefing, the, the, the day before the, the event where we knew the high winds were coming, we talked about power being an issue, and as true, as we said, it, it happened. So there's a, a big push towards solidifying that and making that better. Obviously, any redundancies that we can build into the system, we, we did, we've done so much to make sure we have satellite internet, we have broadband internet times two from different carriers, one from Spectrum, one from Frontier. We have broadband connections, we have 5G hotspots, 5G antennas, you know, you name it, we had connectivity throughout, and we were ready to deploy as needed. We even invested in a portable Starlink that we could give out to crews if they were needed. So, you know, our work is still ahead of us, we still have a ton to do. I have a, two pages full of, you know, things that we can improve, and we're gonna keep doing everything we can to make sure we're better prepared for the next event. And with that, I'll hand it over for questions, and, and with the fact that I wanna thank our City Manager Reynoso, who was just a calm force during the entire event. And I wanna thank City Council for the support that we felt during the event. And a special shout-out to our mayor, who stopped by my office and gave us a very heartfelt thank you for your efforts, which meant the world to us during these difficult times.
Any questions from Council? Yeah.
Okay. Your report is inspiring, first of all. Thank you for it. Power issue, okay. So we don't wanna wait for another storm like, so what, what can we do? What do you suggest we do? More generation power, more battery power, both? Are, are there any easy?
Yeah, certainly. The dream would be to have some sort of large storage batteries, lithium ion, with some sort of solar tide to it, so that even if we ran the batteries down to a certain percent, if we had good sunlight, then we could recharge the batteries day-to-day. So it tends, essentially extending the usage of our batteries for days, potentially even indefinitely if we had enough solar and storage capacity and sun.
Would that use our existing solar panels out by easily, or would we be?
So, so glad you mentioned that.
Have to put new panels in somewhere else?
Yeah, there, there is a potential. I started to turn over every rock, and I had some discussions with Management Analyst Carlson about the project that's over there. And I did discover that there's a 110 kilowatt battery that is used for peak shaving, saving us electricity costs when energy is, is expensive. But there is a potential to tie into those. So I, I'm looking at every which way to solidify our backup. And, you know, the dream would be to have some sort, some sort of solar tide. For now, we've, we've been doing it on a shoestring budget, and we've, you know, the fact that we're even able to deploy resources and move them around means that a lot of our backup batteries are portable. They are large, and they do have a fair amount of capacity, but nowhere near the capacity that we would need to run multiple days uninterrupted. But thank you, that's a great question, and we hope to keep building on top of what we've already done.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question with that? That might need to be answered also by you. I know that we lost energy for a long span of time back in 2011 as well, and did we learn things from that that we had changed for this event? And did we, did we make modifications to how we energize these important facilities?
And, and I think, thank you for that question. I think that's one of the reasons why initially Oscar has increased battery capacity. And I want, something that's unique here is that in, in the multiple water agencies and cities that I've worked for, I've never had the Water Department and the IT Department working so close together. It's typically the Water Department and a SCADA system integrator, and we have the Water Department, the SCADA system integrator, and we have our IT Department working hand in hand. And for him to be able to look at his phone and say, you know, we, we're gonna run out of power, I don't know any other agency that, that, you know, maybe the big ones, MWD, can do that, but the smaller ones like, like us, nobody has that, that capability. And that's because he talked about it, how well we, we work together. One of the challenges that we saw this time around, and, and I think the reason why the backup battery power is important is because a lot of our critical infrastructure, when we turn on the generators, we call it dirty power. And it triggers a lot of his equipment that starts to run maybe not as efficient, or maybe starts to show some problems, because that power is not as clean. So it's okay to run the boosters and wells, but to run computers and, and servers and that, that type of equipment, I think batteries are probably better suited. You can talk about that.
Yeah, it, it's actually an excellent point. Thank you, City Manager Reynoso. Something that was very interesting that I think is worth sharing, and I promise I won't go too deep into the weeds, but it, it is fascinating, is that as we started to lose power, we could feel it. So our backup systems are so sensitive that even the drop in voltage is detected, because servers require such a clean, pure sine wave of energy. So what ended up happening is that our batteries started to drain before the power went out to compensate for the drop in voltage. All this means that even if power is on, because our sensitive equipment requires super clean power, it will begin to draw from the batteries, and that's what we experienced. Once the power was restored, we saw our batteries clicking on and off, so the power is just fluctuating, and certainly to the extent that the generators are running, they, they just, they're not meant to power sensitive electronics. So to answer your question back to 2011, as long as I've been here, I've known power to be an issue, and we've gotten a lot of support from our city manager to upgrade those batteries. We actually have a CIP project specifically dedicated for, for batteries, which we executed on last fiscal year, and have some monies for this year as well. But at some point, we do need to make a large investment to make this, so that, as Councilmember Goss mentioned, you know, we, we, we have a large battery capacity and solar. I think that's the dream, and that, that gives us, you know, the ability to run clean, quiet, and indefinitely potentially.
Sort of piggybacking on Councilmember Goss, you, you mentioned that we lost power at the yard. My understanding is that City Hall did not lose power in a meaningful way, is that correct?
Correct. As far as I know, we, we kept power on at City Hall at all times. We did see some flickering, but power was, was maintained.
So I guess my question is, in terms of the, you know, review, have you considered pressure testing if there were an event where both the yard and City Hall were to lose power, probably similar to 2011, or, you know, foreseeably, right? It was kind of, I thought it was sort of a miracle that we didn't lose power. I didn't lose power either, I live down the street. Do we, do we know that as part of your review, how to extrapolate how, how much more dire the situation would have been if the power had been, been off here at City Hall as well, so that we can make sure that we're also contingency planning for that, that scenario? Because I don't think that's particularly, you know, unforeseen.
Sure, great, great question. We're in a little bit better shape at City Hall in terms of power. We have a very large generator that sits on the side of the police station that can run in the event of an outage. It has to be manually turned on, and once it's on, it will power the police department and City Hall entirely. And we have turned on that generator in the past. Before the event happened, as we discussed it in our executive team, we tested that generator ahead of time to make sure that it was functional and that it was going to work. And during the event, we were ready to turn it on should the power had been cut here, either at City Hall or PD or, or both. We also did know that we lost power at the Hart Park House, and we, we were ready. I mean, we, we, the, the number of scenarios that were running through our heads, and just being, trying to be prepared, I, I was at the point where we were game planning, pulling servers out of their rack and physically moving them, so in case these buildings were gonna be impacted. But getting back to, to your question, we have a, a working, although older generator that, that has supplied us with power, you know, in the past, and was tested during, during the event.
And that generator doesn't have the same sort of dirty power issues you were talking about before, or, or it's so large that it mitigates some of those issues?
It does seem to be quite stable. We, we, we see it when it powers on, our batteries notice the, the voltage surge, but it does seem to power our infrastructure fairly well. And I think it has to do with the fact that it's a turbine generator, and the electronics behind it are a little bit, a little bit better.
If I could follow up on that, do we have any plans to get any backup power here? Is there, I mean, I, I think, don't we have a, a grant or something that we've got to?
It's a softball.
Thank you, Mayor. There's an organization out there called the Clean Power Alliance. And yes, we, we are, we have signed a MOU for the Power Ready Program. That's a program that will add solar panels to both the City Hall and the Public Safety Building. It will have batteries, probably Tesla batteries. It's being designed to run the EOC, the dispatch, and a handful of identified offices in a case of emergency. That is gonna back up our, our trusty old generator there.
Great, thank you.
And can I ask, when, when is that gonna be built?
That's a great question. It's, it's a whole lot of hurry up and wait, hurry up and wait. So we've, we've signed all of our documents we've needed, we've had their inspectors and their contractors to both of the, the rooftops. So I think the administration going through Clean Power Alliance, we're, we're kind of, you know, sitting there waiting, ready to assist any, any way we can. We're not really pushing at them, but now that we have a reason to, it might be a good time to reach out again.
If only we had a good connection with this.
They went up for an RFP for it, or an RFL for it, so, so that's coming back. I, I can get an update for that for the next meeting.
I just had another thought, speaking of the solar, and you mentioned Tesla batteries. In terms of leaving no rock unturned, I mean, you know, maybe add to the list, or maybe it's already there, when we put the charging stations in the parking lot between the gas station and Taylor's, I don't know if there's a way to, in an emergency, you know, draw power there as well, if, if that area, you know, had power as opposed to other places and, you know, recharge batteries and things like that. So I, it was just, you know, I know they're talking a lot about facilitating or, or manufacturing electric cars that are being, being able to, you know, generate electricity both ways and being able to draw from your car into your house. And I don't know if those chargers that are gonna be put in, you know, in the city, in the city lot would have that sort of two-way ability.
That's a good question. I know exactly what you're referring to, and I believe the only vehicle that can do that two-way charging right now would be the Cybertruck. Potentially a feature for the future. I'll, I'll text Elon myself and let him know we need that.
I have a question. So for, I've learned a lot through this, of course, and, and I believe so, our, our Wi-Fi is through FiOS fiber optics with Frontier, correct?
We have multiple paths for Wi-Fi. How it gets broadcasted to the public just depends on various factors, including congestion, including whether the line is up.
How do we run?
Essentially, we have Frontier, we have Spectrum, we have Starlink here at City Hall.
Oh, we still have Spectrum here?
We do.
Okay.
So, so, but just to be clear, there's, there's multiple services of Spectrum, there is the broadband, which is through coax, and then there's fiber from Spectrum, which is a, a managed service that has uptime qualifications of 5.9 reliability with payments should the line go down for, for any downtime that we experience.
The reason I ask that is that when, when our, our residents who had the fiber optics through Frontier, when their electricity went out and came back on, or even when their electricity was on, I'm sorry, off, their Wi-Fi was, because it's not through electrical lines, of something that I don't understand fully, of course, obviously, or else I'd know more. of something that I don't understand fully, of course, obviously, or else I'd know more. But I wanted to know, one, when that's an issue with us here and with our fire departments and our police departments, where a lot of things are internet-based, that makes a difference, that your lines don't need the electricity to function. And then the second part of that question is, the Starlink, so let's say all failed, everything failed, but we still would have the Starlink. Does that have its own internal satellite power? I mean, a solar panel?
It would go to a backup battery, certainly, if power were out. Again, in our case, because it's at City Hall, even if we lost power, generator would kick in. If the generator didn't work for any reason, you'd probably see me drag a battery up there to connect it.
Okay.
Or an extension cord down to the battery. And then to answer your question about Spectrum staying up, or I'm sorry, Frontier and FiOS, all the modems that are fiber will have a backup battery built into it, and it will keep the fiber signal. It doesn't draw a lot of power, so even a small battery will keep that light signal going, which is why so many folks remain connected even when the power went out.
Got it. I never really understood that until this happened, and I noticed that residents who have Spectrum were having to call, and they didn't have Wi-Fi back, even with their power back for so long. And they now switched to the Frontier fiber optics through one of the relatives of our other staff members.
And to be clear, here at City Hall, we have full backups of battery for all of our infrastructure.
That's amazing.
So we would be fine, and then we have the generator on top.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I learned a lot.
Other questions?
Director Malone, thank you. Thank you to you and Christian. I refer to you guys as the backbone, as you've heard before. It's really the central nervous system of the whole city, because you guys touch every single department. A lot of people don't realize that, and they're such a small department, too, right? I can't imagine, knowing you, the contingencies that were going on, your mind, considering all the systems that you oversee. So thank you for the sleepless nights. So kind of going back to SCADA, is that a more sensitive system than the systems we have here at City Hall? Or, because we were talking about dirty power and clean power, is the SCADA system a little more sensitive than the systems here? Or is a computer's a computer, and they're all pretty sensitive to the power?
I wouldn't consider it more sensitive, Councilmember. I think all servers require fairly clean power. I think SCADA is a very critical system, and because of that, we have protected it behind, even though we have these large battery backups, we put an expensive, let's call it a power filter, APC, that just outputs the cleanest possible power to the millisecond level. So, you know, it's kind of all downstream, but all servers and all computers really require clean power to operate properly. At worst, you know, you can experience glitches. Definitely, the life of the equipment will be degraded if you do not have clean power. So that's a consideration. But I think across the board, servers require fairly stable, fairly clean power.
And then thinking about your two sheets of paper of thinking going forward, or maybe this is already something we have, but God forbid that we need to evacuate our city yard, do we have a capability to externally access our SCADA system and operate our SCADA system, or even our EOC, or any type of communications here at City Hall?
That's a great question, and thank you for asking that. Certainly, we have a VPN connection that will allow us to connect to SCADA from anywhere in the world, as long as we have an internet connection and the laptop that is designated for that purpose. This is how the off-duty person in charge of water will check on the system without having to drive into the city, creating some efficiencies there. But it gives us the ability to be able to monitor, check, and make changes to the system through that VPN. The key there, again, is that all the complex pieces that make that happen have to be running. So our servers at the city yard have to be running. The infrastructure inside the office that connects the SCADA computer has to be running, and the SCADA computer itself has to be running. Any one of those pieces breaks, it doesn't work. And we do have extended batteries for every one of those pieces, so that we can stay alive for, at this point, after this event, it was something like 24 hours, which is great. And we're still not happy. We want days. We want a week with backup power.
Well, I just want to thank you for your foresight. I remember when we got that newest battery backup in the SCADA system, you were excited to show that to me.
Yep.
You were very excited, and it was obviously necessary. So thank you for your diligence.
Certainly paid off, and again, we appreciate the opportunity to serve this community. And I got to tell you, your support was felt, and that meant a lot to me, and I'm sure to the rest of the staff. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We've been going for almost three hours. I know some of the councilmembers have taken a break for staff and maybe even for the mayor. Can we take like a five-minute break to? I wanted to try to hopefully get through all of this, but I think we need just a little bit of break. Is that okay with the council?
We have two more. We have City Manager Aguilar and Planning Manager Lynn. I hope we had gotten through that, but I don't know that I can power through unless those two are real quick.
Mayor, we have, I think a break is warranted, and we do have DCM Aguilar, and we have ACM Hernandez, and then Claire Lynn and Sarah.
Okay. So let's take a five-minute break.
There's a public hearing item and there's a discussion item, I think.
Okay. There's two public hearings, one's yours.
So the one on establishing administrative remedies is mine.
Got it.
And the discussion item on the policy positions.
All right, I'd like to call us back to order then at eight twenty-five. And City Manager, turn it to you to introduce us to the next staff person.
So next will be ACM Hernandez with an update on EOC and submittals with initial damage estimates, and DCM Aguilar with communication efforts.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protam and members of the City Council. I'd like to also thank all staff involved in the event for their incredible efforts and commitment. Many employees stepped in for the first time in an EOC, Emergency Operations Center, and just did amazing. So it just wanted to acknowledge that, and they did just a fantastic job. Currently, the EOC is operating at a Level Three remote as we all, as we are still working on collecting invoices, costs for our recovery phase. And as we shift into the recovery phase, I'd like to provide a brief overview of the process that supports the efforts of state and federal reimbursement. The moment the Emergency Operations Center is activated, the, we have ten days to proclaim an emergency. Once the emergency is proclaimed and the proclamation drafted, the governing body, City Council, has seven days to ratify the proclamation. As it pertains to this event, the proclamation was ratified by the City Council on Thursday, January ninth, which begins the five-day timeframe in which we have to gather information, our costs and estimates of the event, which can be a little stressing, stressful for staff to try to bring all that information together. The initial damage estimate requirements requires us to focus on several categories. There's categories A through G, but for the initial damage estimate that we provide, the state is focused on categories C through G. And those categories are comprised of roads and bridges, water control facilities, building and equipment, public-owned utilities, repair, replacement of water pipes, sewer pipes, et cetera. Also parks, which also includes the trails. So we had to gather cost, estimated cost in all of those areas. And we put together a team, an IDE team, Initial Damage Estimate Team, that focused their efforts on coordinating with various departments, such as the Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works. The IDE team was comprised of members of Finance, HR, and Planning. They did an amazing job coordinating the efforts of collecting all this data for, to meet our timeline, our deadline of Tuesday, January fourteenth. However, that timeline or the deadline was moved up to Monday. So we really had to work through these, to the weekend and get all this information so that we can complete the report. Because of their efforts, we were able to complete that report and provided the state with an initial damage estimate of roughly just under $2 million, 1.9 million dollars to be exact. Now, these, cost recovery is going to go on for the next several weeks and months. That number will increase. Today, we did submit our public assistance request with FEMA. Within the next two weeks, we will be receiving a call from FEMA, which will start the process of audit and reviewing the items that we're estimating, all items associated with the event cost. And currently, the logistics team is still collecting invoices from various departments for this event. We will, that will take some time. And so within the next couple of weeks, we hope to have some more information for FEMA. So when we do meet with FEMA, we'll be able to have additional costs associated with the event. That will take some time for any recovery. As we meet with FEMA, we'll go over each item. Some items may be a part of it and some will not. They'll determine that, what is and what isn't. Also, just so that we're aware of this, the, there are two items, two categories that were not included as we did not have the information at the time. It's the protective measures, which includes police fire and other emergency activities, personnel costs, overtime, and also the debris removal. That is still taking place, so we won't have those initial costs at the moment. As the, so while ensuring, I'm sorry. The recovery of this event will take months, and we will work with Cal OES, Office of Emergency Services, along with FEMA. They will be included with, in the meetings that we have with FEMA. They've been a big help providing us with guidance and making sure that we submit the initial damage estimate to the state. In closing, in addition to the recovery, we will begin the after-action reporting phase as well. This, the after-action report can be a resource-intensive and often diverting staff from their regular duties. The document will provide a comprehensive overview of the event as we solicit feedback, both positive and constructive. This document is an essential guide that will assist us with future emergency events as well. And that concludes, and I'll take another question.
Mayor, if I may add, before we turn over to Council. So this assignment was given to ACM Aguilar. And when we think about the departments that were involved in this effort, we had HR that he also oversees, we have planning, and we have finance. And these are the departments that are the most organized in the presentations that they give to Council and all the work that they do and their reporting to, for financials. So it just goes to show the way we applied our resources, and we were able to find just the right people to be able to complete this task in such a tight timeline. And the effort, I think that our Area D representative was just in awe of how efficient they were working under Assistant City Manager Hernandez's lead. So thank you for that.
Thank you. That's fantastic. Yeah, I heard someone comment that the cost estimates we put together put us a week ahead of what was expected.
I think it was a day or two ahead of what was expected.
It was a day or two, okay, yeah. But, but, okay, yeah, so it was just amazing at the organization. Questions from Council? Yes, please.
Thank you so much for your report. Just a couple of questions. We've talked a lot tonight about, obviously, the incident, the fire and the windstorm. We've also talked a lot about the mud flows that we're expecting. Is that considered part of the incident for which we're tracking costs and that we can seek recovery? Or is that a separate incident per se?
I did have this discussion with our Area D Coordinator. And at the moment of that discussion, we weren't sure if it was going to be a separate event, but it very well could be part of the same event in terms of recovery. I don't have the answer as if it's going to be all one event. It may be a separate event for the mud flow. Some of the items that we, in preparing for the mud flow, there are some items that were ordered or purchased so that we prepare for the mud flow. So it, parts of it may be part of the same event.
Thank you. And then my other question also about cost recovery was you mentioned how resource draining the after-action reporting can be. Is that something that we could hire a third party to do and have that cost be recovered as part of our FEMA recovery?
Yes, that's a very good question. We did ask our Cal OES representative if the, if we were to contract the after-action reporting, if that would be reimbursable. He was very hesitant to say yes, that the, it would be a full recovery. But he did say that if there is going to be a recovery, it would be a nominal recovery of perhaps maybe 5% of the cost of that. So he was very hesitant, so it, I don't know if it's going to be a full recovery for that.
So to the extent that, and I'm just being creative, to the extent that we have staff that are on top of their normal, you know, day-to-day duties where they're fully occupied, are then, you know, spending time, perhaps overtime, you know, doing these after-action report, you know, reporting and information gathering, is that, is that then recoverable?
The overtime is recoverable, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you.
Next is DCM Aguilar with the communications update.
Thank you, City Manager Reynoso. The communications through the city is a one-person job at the moment. And the city put out messaging to the community as early as 1:00, 1:06 on Tuesday, January seventh, advising the community that we were anticipating high winds as forecasted through the National Weather Service. The NICSIL alert that went out at 1:06 that day also advised that we, the city was implementing red flag conditions as authorized by our Fire Chief Bartlett. And in those restrictions, 15 streets were restricted from on-street parking. That messaging went out at 1:06. The next messaging to the community went out at 6:43 advising the community, it was a NICSIL alert advising the community, that a fire had been reported in the Eaton Canyon area. At that time, we were monitoring the situation, but we weren't, we weren't sure which way it was going to move. Fire Chief Bartlett went out and gathered information and brought back information that we were able to share with the community. At 7:23, our next alert, so we're looking at about 40 minutes between the time that it was reported to the issuance of an evacuation warning through our Genesis Zones One and Sixteen. So very little time passed from the time that the city was made aware of the Eaton Fire, Eaton Canyon Fire, at the time it was called a closed fire. Forty minutes passed before we issued evacuation warnings in Genesis Zones One and Sixteen, and we were asking for voluntary evacuations. Less than an hour later, we received additional updates from Fire Chief Bartlett, advising and recommending that we extend the evacuation warning to areas east to Grandview Avenue and north of Grove. That was a NICSIL alert that went out at 8:08. And so we are looking at an event now about an hour and a half once the fire was reported. And we have now extended our evacuation warnings to about a quarter of the town at that point. At 9:33, the decision was made to issue evacuations for Genesis Zones One, Two, Three, Seven, Eight, Fifteen, and Sixteen, areas all north of Grandview Avenue. And at 9:33, when we, those evacuation orders were sent out, we were already being notified by residents that they had already left based on the NICSIL alerts that the city put out through Fire Chief's recommendations an hour and a half earlier.
How does that, what do you mean, how you, how do you get a reaction from the public? What do you mean?
Through messaging from the residents who were just saying we're already left through either social media channels or through.
I thought there was a reply.
No.
That's great.
Just through social media channels. Citywide communications continued throughout the evening. A total of seven communications were made from the inception. They were mostly coordinated and managed by two people, City Librarian Leila Regan and myself, along with critical support from our IT departments. In addition to that, we had a Village View messaging that was sent out from our mayor updating the community. And we had a number of Genesis messages that went out through Los Angeles County Office of Emergency Services. Those messages were coordinated through city staff, working with our partners at the county level. The City Hall served as an information dissemination center with four people managing the communications, the communication dissemination at City Hall, two of which live in town. And were not only managing communications to our residents, but also trying to balance the needs of their own families and the concerns about whether or not they would have to evacuate themselves and their families. Of the four people at the City Hall Public Counter, they manned within that week over 2,000 phone calls and hundreds of visitors at the public counter who were seeking information on resources, where to go and what to do. Library also served an additional 400 visitors seeking information and assistance during a period of about a week. The exact dates I have, January ninth through the fifteenth. Library served as an additional resource to our community for charging stations, information, and just to get away if they had nowhere else to go. So our residents were spending time both at Sierra Madre City Hall and at our library, charging their electronic devices and just somewhere to go because they had nowhere else to go at the times. During, during the crisis, or the main portions of the crisis, the city put out one Village View message coordinated by Mayor Parkhurst. We had seven posts in the January 11th edition of the Mountain Views News that had updates regarding the fire. We had five posts in the January 18th edition of the Mountain Views News, providing additional information. Twenty NICSIL alerts were issued during that time. Ten Facebook Live video updates were provided by City Manager Reynoso and staff, mostly Fire Chief Bartlett, but staff from the Fire Department and staff from the Police Department, and also staff from the Water and Public Works Departments. We had informational packets that went out to our public. The informational packets had information that provided our residents and our community with FEMA resources and links on where to go, how to manage disaster relief. And in addition to all this information, it also, we also provided N95 masks to the community. During this time, City Hall and library hours were extended so that we could provide additional information and resources to our community. Typically, the library and City Hall are closed on Fridays, but City Hall remained open as did the library. And then yesterday, holiday Monday, City Hall was open. Through our efforts and partnership with Los Angeles County, we have additional resources that we've been providing to our community. We have limited resources at this time, but we're expecting additional. And so we encourage anybody with questions on this one. This pamphlet is for a homeowner's guide for flood, debris, and erosion control. This information is, are you prepared for a flood? And then this, this brochure is on how to prepare for the upcoming storm season. Do want to recognize that some of the efforts through our watch captains, our neighborhood watch captains was critical. The information was being provided to our neighborhood watch captains, and then they took that information and shared it with their neighborhoods and also assisted the city with checking on the neighbors, which was important and critical during that time. We continue to provide messaging, although less at this point since the immediate crisis has lessened. But we issued the last Facebook Live video on Sunday afternoon. And there is one more challenge I wanted to mention. One of the greatest challenges that, not greatest challenges, but it was a challenge, is our access to the AM radio. There was been, there has been some questions from the community about access to the AM 1630 radio station. This is a radio station that was set up years ago through donations and community support. The issues that our IT department has been working on for several months at this point, along with Robert Jardy and, and Bob Spears, are, have been a challenge because the technology has changed so much from when the instruments were, were installed that now there are parts of those, of that technology that's become obsolete or not compatible with the newer technology. So it presents some challenges in accessing that means of communication. It's not to say that it's impossible, but it would take some time and resources to get it back up and going.
I'd like to add that all the videos were posted on, on Channel Three?
On Channel Three and the city's website. We did receive feedback from the community, and the community asked, and we responded with uploading the videos to Channel Three so that, that was an additional source of information. And then we've also posted it on the city's website, the links to the videos on the city's website.
And all NICSILs were on the city's website as a pop-up when?
On the main.
On the main page when somebody went to the website.
So clarification, the link was posted on the website, so?
Links to the videos were posted on the website.
Was it the link to the Facebook?
Yes.
So if they don't have Facebook, did they have, did we have videos loaded?
On Channel Three.
The videos?
So let's say they don't have Channel Three. Is Channel Three the web-based ability to see it, or is it the actual TV station?
Spectrum.
Okay. So if they don't have Spectrum TV and they don't have Facebook, which you can't access if you don't have a Facebook account?
So Instagram too.
Well, yeah, but I'm talking about, remember our person who was just here a few minutes ago that came last meeting and said that there's no way her dad's ever getting Facebook? So if someone doesn't have, Instagram and Facebook are the same company, by the way, and have the same handle. So if they can't do that, couldn't we just post like a YouTube version or a, just the video itself?
So the video is available on YouTube.
Okay.
And it's available on YouTube, Instagram, Facebook, and it's also on Channel Three. There are four avenues for the public to access the information.
So from what I observe, all information that was disseminated in a Facebook Live or an Instagram Live was also disseminated in NICSIL? Or was it not?
No.
Not always, okay.
Kind of, right? I mean, most, I think, I feel like the, we had, I mean, City Manager should speak to this, but I feel like there was a Facebook Live that covered certain points, and then there would be a NICSIL that was sent out, you know, relatively, you know, around the same time that, that covered the similar points. It may not be the exact same content, but I think it was meant to, meant to track that if we covered, you know, water and X and Y, that the NICSIL also covered water, X and Y, maybe in a truncated form. Is that correct?
Does the city have a NICSIL account?
That is correct, Councilmember Krebs. The information that was in the video, the highlights and the bullet points were included in. And if any, in the NICSIL alerts and if any other updates happened between the video and the dissemination, the distribution of the NICSIL alerts, those were also included. Because that's, that happens sometimes, is it, the situation was so fluid and it was constantly moving that there were, we would put out the video alert. constantly moving, that there were, we would put out the video alert, and then almost immediately we'd get other updates. And so instead of doing another video, we would just include it in the NICSIL alert. So there were times that the NICSIL alert contains additional information that at the time, that wasn't available at the time that we posted the videos.
Does the city have an X account? Have an X account, which used to be Twitter?
We, we do, but it's not utilized often.
I just noticed other cities were giving out information using their X accounts, and police and fire departments use it, but I, I was gonna say, at the bottom of our webpage, can we add our handles? Because I looked just now, and we don't have any of our accounts, like, click here to sign up for our Facebook, click here for our Instagram, click here for our Instagram, I mean, YouTube subscription. Am I saying that right? Okay.
We can include those on the website.
Yeah, because I notice most websites have that, where it's like the little handle, you just click on the picture, and then you're, boom, get access to it.
We do encourage our residents to get their, their official information from city platforms, the official city platforms.
Yes.
Oftentimes, the source of information that is provided in the community groups is, is opinions and not facts.
That's why it would be good to have those at the bottom of the page, that they can click on and know which one of the official pages are.
We do encourage residents to obtain their information from the official city platforms.
Other questions from council?
I don't have a question, I just have a suggestion, and it kind of links to the, this presentation with an earlier presentation around some of the community organizing that Chief Bartlett mentioned. I would hope that, similar to what you were saying about the neighborhood watch information dissemination, is that some of these fire safe councils and, you know, other groups that we're, we're putting together, like, part of that, I think, and I've spoken with Chief Bartlett about this, or heard him speak about it, that part of the benefit of those would also be able to push out information through them in real time, and also do a campaign to have people start being on the platforms that we use to put out information, whether it be signing up for the NICSIL, you know, opting into the Genesis system, you know, reluctantly joining social media if you're not already on it, because I think we've seen that, you know, not being on it can be a real detriment in times like this, and maybe you just use it for emergencies. But I mean, just so that we can, you know, in tune to, because we aren't going to be able to give every single, you know, every single bit of information on every single channel, and we're certainly not gonna be able to mail people, you know, notices of evacuation. So, you know, we, we have to be sensitive to, you know, the real-time communication methods that we have, and we also have limits on what that is. So, you know, I think we need a city-community partnership to figure out, you know, we, we need to be putting out our, the information about where we're going to, what channels we're going to use, but we also need the community to be receptive, to being flexible, to, you know, accessing some of those, even if they're not something that they would do normally.
Councilmember Krebs, I'm happy to report that the, the avenues that we, that the city uses to provide information to the community are public and they're free. We also appreciate the, the neighborhood watch programs and, and ask that neighbors check on neighbors who, who are not wanting to enroll in any of these free communication sources. And so we do request, and we've, we've heard a lot of cases in this specific crisis where we had neighbors checking on neighbors, and I think that that's one of Sierra Madre's strengths. So I do appreciate that our community does reach out to neighbors who are less than willing to join the free options for communications.
And I think it needs to be said that we pushed out all this information with existing, existing city staff, whereas other cities would probably have a half-million-dollar budget for this type of communication.
Mm-hmm.
So we had staff such as DCM Aguilar, such as ACM Hernandez, such as Librarian Regan, wearing hats that they typically don't wear, and getting this out, and I think they did an amazing job, given how hamstring we are for finances and, and revenue and, and resources in that capacity. So we're, we're trying to after, after action and see how we can do better, but we are still resource deprived.
Well, and also, I would say that folks were doing their normal jobs. They were doing crisis management jobs, and then they were doing communication jobs. And I, I think, I tried to impart to folks who were frustrated with the frequency or quality or whatever have you of the communication, that part of the reason why communications were what they were is because folks were doing the work that needed to be done, and that was the priority sometimes over telling people what they were doing. So I think, you know, I just think people needed to realize that not hearing from the city didn't mean that the city wasn't acting, it was that the city was busy acting in a way that prevented them from turning as, as immediately to communication as some folks may have, may have, may have preferred.
Prime communication was to save lives, and we got everybody evacuated.
Following up on that, just as I asked the Fire Chief, do we have a position in our city where we could improve communications?
You mean a PIO?
Well, no, we have a PIO, but do we have a, do we have a position that would be, behoove us, available?
We have, we have one communication person, and I think Councilmember Garcia talked about, to put out the type of information that I think the community wants, and the council's been alluded to, the budget would have to double or triple.
But we do have that position in our books, correct?
We have one position, correct.
Is that filled right now?
We are actively recruiting for that position.
Thank you, thank you. That's all I wanted. Thank you.
So I'll, I'll echo what other councilmembers said. I, I think there was one statistic, I didn't hear that you had handed to us here during the break, and maybe it was said, but I, I'd like to underscore it if it was, was that there were seventy infographics created in that time period. So in addition to all the other things, the, the Genesis, the Mountain View News, the NICSIL alerts, the Facebook updates, but seventy infographics were, were just, I mean, it was amazing to see. And we had staff that, I, I, you know, to others' points, the, the City Librarian was working on communication while her staff, some of whom who had been evacuated, were running the library. I mean, it just is, like, this is the type of roll up your sleeves, help out, it, it is, is awe-inspiring of what people did and the dedication to the city.
I agree. Thank you, Mayor, for that, because had it not been for our IT department supporting the communication effort, had it not been for City Librarian Regan, we would not have had as much information that went out. Seventy infographics created and shared is, on top of the ten video messages that went out, in addition to the posts that went into the newspaper, and what, the other thing I, I failed to mention is that during all of this, and while all of this is happening, the Los Angeles County asked for city staff to man, to work shifts at the PCC Local Assistance Center. And so we had staff at PCC for twelve-hour shifts on a daily basis, including Saturdays and Sundays and the holiday, providing information to our community to get them the resources that they needed, whether it was DMV, or, you know, their driver's license, or it was a birth certificate that burned in the fire, or a, any information that they had, that they needed, they, our city staff was at PCC along with other staff members from the county and from the state level to assist our, our community with those efforts as well.
Excellent. And, and, you know, I've heard some criticisms of the Facebook Live videos, that the audio wasn't good, the camera angles were wonky. You know, having seen one or two of those produced, it was produced on an iPhone in this room, we didn't have these cameras up here, we didn't have these mics. It was, I mean, it, it was duct tape and baling wire that pulled it together and got it out there. And, and, you know, in my view, we got the information out. What, you know, yes, the audio quality wasn't good on, on one of the first ones, but we improved it going on. We don't, like, to, to Councilmember Garcia's, we don't have a staff of three or four people. It's people on their phones, sometimes multiple phones, filming these things to get them out there, to get the information to the public. And I just, I really want to applaud all of the effort that went into it, and all of the, just, you know, I mean, it was quick action. It was like, we gotta do it, we're gonna do it now, and we're gonna make it happen. And I, I was just amazed to see that. So kudos to everybody for all of that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Other comments and questions? All right, we are, who are we on to next?
Our final two presenters for tonight are Planning Manager Lynn and our city attorney.
Delecting Mayor and members of the council, I'm here to provide an update on the ongoing effort that the planning department is in support of this incident. Currently, we're working with our partner agencies in response to the recent structural damage assessment and the fire debris removal operation. So as you have heard from Chief Bartlett, that today, up to date, our building official and our inspection team have completed damage assessment report of sixty structures of the, of those, twenty-six structures have been red-tagged, that include the fifteen primary residents that Chief Bartlett reported on, plus eleven accessory structure, meaning garages, outhouses, ADUs. And thirty-four structures has been classified as damaged, which are red-tagged and green-tagged. This effort remains ongoing as our team continues to respond to the reports from the residents, identifying additional damaged structure from the fire. We encourage the community to report any structural damage by emailing us at damagereport@sierramadrecity.gov. In addition to the damage assessment, the city is actively engaged in the joint task forces in debris removal and recovery. So those were going to facilitate the private property debris removal, and those efforts are in accordance with U.S. EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Offices of Emergency Services, both state level and county level, and county public health as well, and including all the jurisdiction that was affected by the fire. So we can provide a uniform message out to the affected community. So the federal government is assisting with the private property damage removal to mitigate the immediate threat to the public health and safety in our region, which is LA County, city of Sierra Madre, Pasadena, and Altadena. So the debris removal phase will be conducted in two phases. Like our city manager said, the first phase will be a hazardous material removal. That is a mandatory procedure conducted by the EPA. This phase ensures that safe removal of hazardous material before any further work can begin. The next phase will be fire damage and debris removal and utility works. So once the hazardous material are cleared, utility company will come in and begin capping or removing the damaged service lines, such as drop lines or the risers from the gas meter. And U.S. Army Corps of Engineer will deploy specialized team that will assist with the removal of fire damage debris from the private property. And at that time, they'll require the property owner to fill out a right-of-entry form that our city, city attorney is currently reviewing, so it will be a regional effort. All these efforts are being conducted at no cost to the resident, ensuring that the community receives the necessary support without the financial burden. From our joint force, task force, the latest update from EPA is that they have secured a staging site in Irwindale, so they're, begin to build their staging site, and they are ready to deploy forty to sixty crews to help out the community. And they are building a story map as well, so it will be a website that is available for all the residents, and they're preparing a toll-free number for the residents as well. So all these are in the works. So the next step will be continue, remain engaged with the residents and the partner agencies to ensure a smooth recovery process. We will continue to provide updates and guidance as new information becomes available. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. Questions?
I have a question. Have, have you notified or have you had been in contact with all residents who have red-tagged property?
We have several emails that came in through the damage report at sierra madre city gov. We also are gathering datas, their contact informations. When they come to the counter, we get, we try to have their phone numbers, emails, so once EPA is ready, we have the contact information that we can provide for them to contact the property owner. They also mentioned that Army Corps of Engineer, during their later phase, they will provide tags on-site and try to reach out to the homeowner if the phone and email all failed. So they will attempt three times to contact the property owner, and they will meet them on-site to assess the fire damage debris, and they actually can opt out, or they can select what debris to be removed, or what debris that they prefer not to be touched.
I, I just know that, so like, when something happens in Sierra Madre, let's say you have a call at your house, and they have to, Fire Department or Police Department, you know, has to notify that owner, like, for instance, your fire alarm's gone off, they get, break entry into your home, Police Department finds your contact by your address, usually calls you, and a call comes from Sierra Madre Fire Department. Have we utilized our ability to contact homeowners that have not contacted us yet to advise them of this information?
At this time, we're still gathering contact informations. I can reach out to our fire and police.
And I do know that in some instances, it's illegal to obviously use those, those avenues, but I don't know if in an emergency that would be. Do you have a number of how many of the twenty-six, let's see, we've got twenty-six red-tagged buildings or structures, and fifteen of those are residents? Do you know how many residents we've been in contact with?
We have not called, but we have gathered all the phone numbers from our, you know, past applications that we were able to find, and so I believe we have all the contact phone numbers for those twenty-six structures.
Do you know, though, I'm asking, do you know how many we have been in contact with?
We have not made contact with any of the...
Any of them?
Unless they come to the counter.
We don't have that number. We don't know how many of them have come to us.
So far, we have probably four...
Okay.
That came to the counter and talked to us.
Other questions?
Yeah. So, thank you, Planner Lynn, Director Lynn, sorry. So Phase One, it sounds like that's already starting to roll out because the EPA is set up in Irwindale. You mentioned forty to sixty crews. Have, have they given you a timeline, or is there some type of triage that they're, they're gonna look at? I mean, I don't want to be callous, but if like, a whole block is gone versus somebody like the Richards End, there's, there's a house next door to you, and the other structures are, are still existing. Have they given you any game planning on how, how quickly they can get this done? Because then in Phase Two, has to wait until Phase One's complete, and some residents still can't get, if, let's say they have an ADU, they, some of them can't even come to their main structure until that, that, at least that hazmat portion is done. Is that correct? And then, do you have a timeline?
Thank you for the question. So, yes, Phase One has to be complete in order for Phase Two to start, and they have a lot of concern about toxic material VOCs, and LA, they will need to get the clearance from LA County Health, you know... And LA, they will need to get the clearance from LA County Health in order to move forward. EPA has not shared any game plans. They are preparing that story map. And they said from that story map, you will be able to see which property they're moving towards. And it will be a constant update once that site is up.
That's helpful.
Councilmember Versi, if I may add, when we talk about local control, that's, that's one of the reasons why of the eight task forces, staff is involved in each one of them. Over the weekend, I attended three task force meetings and Claire probably did eight of them. And it gives us an opportunity to convey that kind of story. Because when you look at areas that have been devastated, it doesn't impact the neighbors next to them, right? So, we can tell that story and say, we have, you know, one house to burn down, and you have a neighborhood around that that's still going to that, to that neighborhood. We need to get those hazards out because there's people that are there. Other areas where we have streets devastated, nobody's there. So, we can convey that there's an urgency to get resources to Sierra Madre.
That's helpful.
So, following up on that, do we know how many we have affected displaced families due to the fact that it could be the residents next door, or the, or the?
Or an ADU.
ADU. Do we have that number on how many residents we have in Sierra Madre that are displaced still?
We don't, not to my knowledge.
So, sorry, just on that same point, sorry. So, the Richardsons have been told that they can't be in their house, and, and who told them that? Or they are just sort of taking into account the fact that the house next door to them is, is?
Toxic.
Toxic. I mean, because it seems to me that, you know, we know this information, and we're now talking about this information, but people on, you know, in our town may not know that they shouldn't necessarily. And there probably are people who are, unlike the Richardsons, are in their houses next door to properties that have been, been damaged. Or is, is there an effort at, at any level, you know, whether it's at the city level or any of these task forces, or the EPA, or county, or all of the agencies involved, to actually reach out to folks and make them understand that, that these are, these hazards do exist?
So, LA County Health is going to send out a unified messaging infographic. They still going to stick with the rule that no one should be close to the debris pile. No one should be one, within one hundred feet of the debris pile.
I didn't even know that.
So, those information will, will, we're still waiting for LA County Public Health to release those information. And once we have that, we can have our PIO review them and then distribute that.
And that means that people might be living there and then they have to leave.
Was that, in, in terms of all of the planets, the repopulation plans, you know, just district, region-wide, was any of that taken into account before letting people back? Was that communicated? I mean, just in general, right? I mean, obviously, those repopulation effect or efforts were done, you know, across agencies.
I think the initial repopulation and messaging that we got was to avoid the, the lots, not to go on to the lots. Once the, once the yellow tag is, or evacuation orders from, go from yellow to white, I don't think that we have enforcement ability, but we can put out the information to residents to stay away from those areas. And again, the EPA, through these task forces, is starting to develop the language and, and the boundaries for those properties, and then we can get that out. If residents are impacted and the EPA is recommending that they stay out, we'll likely refer those residents to the recovery center in, in Pasadena so that they can get FEMA assistance, if any assistance is made available for relocation and anything else that can be provided through FEMA and the county.
Thank you. I mean, I, I guess what you were saying before about, you know, the fact that we have seats at this table and we have identif, you know, a relatively low number of identified destroyed structures, I would hope that we could make some personalized messaging, right? I mean, I think we're, if we're talking about twenty-six structures, we're not talking about thousands of people here. And I would hope that when, once we have the information that we need from the other agencies, you know, maybe we can do some concerted outreach to the people that are affected, you know, as part of our communication plan.
Thank you for that. Other comments?
So, so I had a question. So, the, the toxic things that I've heard on the, the, both in these meetings and through the media, we're, we're talking mainly about lead, arsenic, asbestos, and VOCs. Are those kind of the, and maybe the?
Like the lithium ion, like all that.
Lithium ion batteries.
Okay, lithium ion batteries. So, those are kind of the, the five or so categories that we're looking at for, for, for potential contaminants that people, okay.
But the EPA is only cleaning, from what I understand, they're only cleaning like large debris. They're not, they're not sanitizing a site. So, if they find large pieces of toxic, that's what, that's their job. They're not, that, when the Army Corps of Engineer comes in, that's when the site would, would potentially be free of, potentially be free of those toxins. Is that correct?
Correct. So, the hazardous material will be removed by EPA. They gave us an example, like for lithium battery, lithium ion battery, they are going to spray paint with the blue lightning ball and then remove that and identify and then remove those. And those are part of the EPA effort. And then the second phase will be all the fire damaged debris will be removed by the Army Corps of Engineer.
Okay.
And what was Phase Three?
It's Army Corps.
So, so it's?
Oh, right, right now, it's, it's two phases. Potentially could go to three phases with utilities coming into cap. And removal of, and removal of foundations.
I have that as Phase Two together. Okay, let me break that.
Any other questions or comments for Planner Lynn?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are we, do we have any, oh, we, we have Attorney Gergosian.
Sorry.
Last but not least.
Yes, I'll be quick. I'm gonna go through some federal, state, and then local orders. The first at the federal level, just to point out, the Forest Service has closed the Angeles National Forest. And we can expect it to be closed through the rest of the month. There's also a prohibition on flying drones over the Angeles National Forest because it might interfere with firefighting activities. So, if you have a drone, don't fly it over because if they catch you, you're gonna be subject to a civil penalty, up to twenty thousand dollars. There have been a number of executive orders at the state level. I'm just gonna highlight a few. And the first ones I'm gonna highlight have to do with the rebuild process. So, if your home was damaged, first of all, City of Sierra Madre has a special municipal code provision dedicated to situations where you have to rebuild. But at the state level, they've waived, or they've suspended CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. They, like was just presented, assisting with debris removal, mitigating mud flows. They have their fast-tracking approvals for certain developments, including ADUs and single-family homes that have been damaged. But aside from that, what I really wanted to highlight is we are seeing a couple of actions that the executive order has declared illegal. So, for example, price gouging. So, if you're dealing with contractors that are inflating their prices, or you're going to stores and things are much more expensive than they ordinarily would be, that's, that's considered price gouging, and it's illegal in times of emergencies. We, the governor has prohibited unsolicited offers to purchase property below fair market value for the next three months. So, if anyone comes to your home and offers to purchase your home, and you look up Zillow's price and it's below what Zillow's price is, could be potentially illegal. And then there's also a lot of limitations regarding evictions. So, you can no longer, you can't evict someone, for example, if they're hosting somebody else who's fleeing the fire situation, has been evacuated from their home. So, if you're experiencing price gouging, or unsolicited offers, or any kind of eviction issues, the California Department of Justice is the agency charged with enforcing these executive orders. They've created a disaster relief task force. You are encouraged to contact them directly. The hotline is one eight hundred nine five two five two two five. Or you can email them at oag.ca.gov/report. So, that's at the state level. There's a flurry of new bills intended to provide financial and other types of relief to all these people affected by the fire. And we'll provide an update to the city council later on as those bills go through the legislative process. And lastly, I just want to note that the LA County, at the local level, the LA County Public Health Order prohibiting air blowers is still in effect countywide. So, that means if you are, you wanna clean your sidewalk, or you have someone that does landscaping for you, they, they can't use those electric leaf blowers or gas-powered leaf blowers, if already illegal to use gas-powered leaf blowers. But all these leaf blowers are prohibited. If you see someone using it in town, call our code enforcement. Our code enforcement is enforcing that. We did issue three executive orders because the city manager is currently our Director of Emergency Services. Those have all since expired. But the local emergency that the city council declared is still in effect, and it will be reconsidered at the next city council meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just to comment that I noticed, and I was thrilled, that our two local gas stations, I think we had some of the cheapest gas that I'd seen in years during that time, kind of just talking about price gouging. So, to our business owners in town, thank you for, for not price gouging and doing the right thing. That's really the only comment I have.
Thank you. Others?
So, the, the governor extended the special session, I believe, and asked for two bills. One was a billion dollars, there's a billion and a billion and a half, and I can't remember which is which. One of them is, I think is a billion and a half going to LA County to help with the response to the wildfires. And there's another billion for the state for climate change resilience and response. Is that, do I have those right, that those are going forward?
I don't have any, I don't have any bills here that talk about a billion dollars. I do have a bill that I'm looking at that provides a hundred million dollars to small businesses. So, if there's a bill out there?
I can, I can get you that, cuz I, yeah, that, the, the governor's office was sending us some of those. They were supposed to have summarized all of them, but let me make sure you, you get that one.
And our own, I think Assemblyman Harabedian has introduced a bill to help provide mortgage relief for folks who have lost their homes so that you aren't having to pay a mortgage on a house that doesn't exist. And so, I know he's introduced that bill with the speaker. I saw, I saw him put out that information. Obviously, all these bills are, you know, in process and none of them are yet enacted, so.
And that's a great point. Speaker Rivas had also said that he saw those executive orders of a billion and a billion and a half and said, "We're gonna take a look at that and then maybe more." So, I think, you know, we do have folks that are, they're looking out for those, those things.
And also, our insurance commissioner also put out the?
Moratorium.
The moratorium, as well as anybody who was in the process of negating fire insurance is suspended and they are covered. I'm misquoting that because I'm not looking at it right now.
It's for the next year. You cannot cancel.
And people that were previously in process of being canceled.
That's right.
They cannot be canceled.
Thank you.
For the year.
Was that part of the moratorium, or I, I felt like there were some insurance companies who voluntarily did that. I think that?
I believe, yes, they agreed to, like, that was part of his moratorium. I can look for the email again. I posted it.
But people should pay attention to, if they get a cancellation notice, that they should?
Yes.
Talk to the commissioner, Laura, the insurance commissioner.
And then, one of the most recent ones, EOs that came out, executive orders that came out yesterday, was that it's gonna streamline emergency response work. And this was the important part that jumped out to me, such as shoring up hillsides and clearing debris out of waterways quickly by suspending certain environmental rules. I think that's what you were talking about with CEQA. But, you know, the, the part that really jumped out to me was that shoring up the hillsides part, that they recognize that, they're hearing that. So, I, I felt, you know, that may help us with some of the, the resources. And then just to, to add on the eviction, that, the eviction, that's if you've got, like, if you, you're only allowed to have five people in, in a house, and you happen to have ten, you can't evict them if you have too many people. Is that, is that right? Is that what the eviction is about?
I, I don't know. If, the, the way to find out is to contact the Attorney General because the Attorney General's office is the one that's enforcing those provisions.
Right.
So, I, I don't know exactly what the terms of the eviction protections are.
So, the way that I had heard it, the way it had been communicated to me was, is that that was the intent of that eviction. So, I, part of the reason I wanted to bring that up is that if you are welcoming someone into your home, and you are a renter, and you're above the limit on your, your lease, that, that you're not supposed to be able, that the landlord's not supposed to be able to evict you because you're sheltering someone at that point in time. Again, you're right, we, we'd have to get into the details, but that's the way that it was communicated to me when, when that executive order came out.
I, I think regardless, if you're being evicted now, at this point, you should probably call the Attorney General because there are, there are a host of eviction protection laws on the books already. And they're in charge of, they may be in charge of enforcing those as well. If they're not, they're going to refer you to their local county representatives who can help enforce those for you.
Well said. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may repeat the city's damage report website one more time for our residents?
Absolutely, please do.
So, it's damagereport@cierramadreca.gov. So, any resident that has experienced damage, whether it's wind-related or fire,
Thank you. And that actually brought up something I forgot to ask Manager Lynn. So, we talked about damage assessments related to fire, but I know of at least one home in the city that was damaged with respect to wind. When we're looking at those twenty-six structures, are, are we looking holistically at both fire and wind damage? And do we have, do we know how many are differentiated, or maybe you can't tell?
Mayor, thank you for the question. Yes, so, the, the event started as a 2025 windstorm event. So, all the fire damage and the wind damage are reported to the city. The inspection has been done for two properties that was damaged by wind.
Okay. Great. So, so that damage report is not just for the fire, it's for the wind, it's for the whole event? So, great. Thank you for that clarification. All right. Anything else?
That concludes our presentation for the evening.
All right. Well, so we do need to hit consent. Let's get through consent, and then let's take a second and just, just take a bigger picture and look at what, what else we have to do. Yes?
I was gonna say, do we wanna reopen the agenda item? Just, just reopen, reopen the agenda? Do we want to amend the agenda?
Actually, before we even do that, someone, you actually recommended that we open up this section for public comment. I think we have at least one person from the public here. So, if there's anyone that would like to provide public comment for the Eaton Fire Update? All right. So, now we will open up the, so?
I was just wondering if we wanted to reevaluate our approval of the agenda, given where we're at in the meeting.
If I may, I'd like to just get through the, the consent. Can we do it after that? Okay. Because we do have to do consent. So, City Clerk Aguilar, can you rece, can you read the consent items by title only?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council this evening is asked to consider ten items on the consent calendar. A, Consent A is the consideration of Resolution 25-01, approving certain demands. And the city council is asked to approve Resolution 25-01, ratifying the payment of city warrants. Consent Item B is consideration of Resolution 25-02, again, approving certain demands. The city council is asked to approve Resolution 25-02, and that is approving payment of city warrants. Consent Item C is consideration to award consulting service, a consulting services contract for furniture, fixtures, and equipment services for the library meaningful improvement project to TSK Architects. Pursuant to the city council's approval to amend Consent Item C, it is recommended that the city council award a consulting contract in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars to TSK Architects. Consent Item D is consideration to sign a, a letter of support for the city of Arcadia's application for the Caltrans sustainable- application for the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant. And staff's recommendation is that the city council approve and authorize the city manager to, to sign a letter of supporting and endorsing the city of Arcadia's application to Caltrans. Consent Item E is the final subdivision map approving for parcel map number 83267, a lot subdivision at 91 East Orange Grove Avenue. And it is recommended that the city council review and approve the final subdivision map and authorize the city clerk to certify parcel map number 83267. Consent Item F is consideration of Resolution 25-04, amending Resolution, city council Resolution 23-21, for the purpose of extending the expiration date of a conditionally approved tentative parcel map for a condominium project located at 182 South Baldwin Avenue in Sierra Madre. Next is Consent Item G, consideration of Resolution 25-03. This resolution is terminating the city of Sierra Madre's participation in the memorandum of understanding and withdrawing from the Five Cities Alliance regarding the proposed 710 freeway. And it is recommended that the city council adopt Resolution 25-03. Moving on to Consent Item H is a consideration of approving amendment number one, extension of services for the professional agreement of landscape services to merchant landscape services in an amount not to exceed $125,100 for the remainder of fiscal year 2024-2025. And it is recommended that the city council approve this amendment. Consent Item I is a consideration of approving amendment number one, extension of services for the professional services agreement for extermination services to extreme pest control in an amount not to exceed $6,000 for the remainder of the current fiscal year 2024-2025. And it is recommended that the city council also approve this extension. And lastly, Consent Item J is a consideration of Resolution number 25-08, to acquire the right of way for the off-street improvement of Carter Avenue from the county of Los Angeles. It is staff's recommendation that the city council adopt Resolution 25-08. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right. Let's try to go through these. So any questions on item A? Item B?
Just a quick question. I think the Starlink was on item B. I don't remember if it was on item A or item B, but that seems like a relatively inexpensive amount for something so amazing as a satellite Wi-Fi capability that our city really needed. I think it was only $500 and then subscription's like $130. Is that, is that correct?
I would have to ask.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Thank you. Item C? Item D? I just had, had a question, a couple of questions on item D. Trying to make them quick. So is there a way that we can leverage this, this active transportation plan for the city of Arcadia? Potentially, maybe some areas where they're adjoining that we might be able to, to partner with them on some of the items?
I think our, our senior analyst, Carlson, can answer that?
We will definitely take a look at that. I don't know if we can do it formally through the grant process, but.
I wasn't thinking formally.
Yeah, but, you know, we're always looking to, to work with Arcadia Pasadena. And you know, from a lot of our subcommittee meetings, we will definitely be in touch with them to see how we can support and maybe how they can help us as well.
And we have done some projects with them, collaboration in the past.
Yeah, on, on active transportation as well. And is this something we may be able to consider in, in the future? It seems pretty exciting. I think the subcommittee would be really excited if we could, at some point, get a, a grant like that. And the last thing is, is if it's okay with the council, the letter to me was fine, but if we could put, I, I'd like to just add a little something about Sierra Madre and our partnership with the city, other than just the grant. If that's okay with, with the council on it, or if that's a concern, then, or if we need to pull it out, then we can do that. But the, the letter was, was, was good, but it, I, the, the partnership with the city would just, it didn't jump out with me.
I believe the template was provided by the city of Arcadia.
And that's what they're looking for?
There was some urgency because of timeline. And so if, if council's okay with approving it the way it is.
I, I, I'll be, if it's time sensitive, then let's, let's support them. Great. Item E? Item F? Item G? Item J?
Bingo.
Yes.
Yes, and item J, which is the acquisition of the right of way on Carter. I noticed that the county, obviously, it offered the city the opportunity to buy the right of way. I, I don't have the exact amount, but, you know, for some amount of money. I just wanted a reminder as to our arrangements with the developer and the monastery for that project under the development agreement. Is that a cost that the city bears? Is that a cost that the city expends but then gets reimbursed? What, who is the ultimate responsible party for that cost?
New Urban West Sierra Madre has sent us the check for the entire amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
I had a question just about, would that extend into the area where there are those cypress trees that are extremely flammable? Is there any way we can mitigate when we're doing that? When that build is happening, that we remove any flammable tree life from extending our fire zones?
Acting planning manager, Lynn, acting director, I'm sorry?
Particularly the cypress trees that we can remove that are extremely flammable?
We're very concerned about the removal of trees.
I know, but those are our houses that spread, spread fire, as we've seen on the list.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So the cypress tree that's north of Carter Avenue, we have three that is, will be marked for removal, and one of them has already died.
Oh. Thank you. Has, it's died and it's been removed?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Or burned in the fire. Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Anybody has public comment? Did we receive any public comment on the items on the consent agenda?
The, the city council, the city clerk's office received emails and they were forwarded to the city council.
Do you have any cards for any public comments?
We do not, we do not.
All right. Discussion?
Would you approve the consent?
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that passes unanimously. All right, so now let's take a look at the agenda, since that was, I'm, I will open it for feedback and discussion, recommendations.
Mayor, if I may, there's one item that we do have to see tonight, and that is public hearing item number one, consideration of Resolution 2405, authorizing the allocation of fiscal year 2025-26 CDBG funds to continue the senior minor home rehabilitation program. There is a timeline, deadline tied to that item.
Okay. And is there any timeline with respect to appointments to the COG, the League of Cities, SCAG?
Yes.
I kind of.
It's over.
I, 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 I was trying to take the temperature. I was thinking, so, so if we did those two things and postponed public hearing two and discussion?
Two.
Two?
Two.
Yeah, I was trying to read two. Is it, okay?
That's the legislative policy.
Oh, right. Yes.
So public, public hearing two. Do we, we have to have a date certain to avoid renoticing? Or how, how does that work?
Yes, I, I think when you come to those items, the, if the council can just make a motion to continue the item to whatever date you choose and then.
Okay.
For each individual item.
For each individual item.
That's my recommended approach.
And for the discussion, we don't have to, because it's not a hearing, we don't, it didn't require notice.
You don't have to set the date, but it sounds like we may have space on the agenda for the next meeting? For both items?
We have the, we have an agenda for.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Should we start with the public hearing?
We do have one, we do have four or five discussion items for the February 11th, so.
Isn't our next meeting next week?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
The 20th?
Twenty eighth. Four discussion items.
For the 28th?
Yes.
Okay, so we have another packed agenda. So let's go ahead and do the public hearing for, for number one. Well, I guess we have to, we have to modify the agenda first, don't we?
To me, it just depends on how long these presentations are.
Okay.
Does that make sense with you guys?
And it sounds like we can consider them.
As we go.
If they come up and we can defer them if we need to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Then thank you, everyone, for that discussion. So let's go ahead and have public hearing item one, Resolution 2505.
Evening again, mayor and members of the council. So the public hearing item before you is to approve Resolution 2505, authorizing the allocation of year 2025-2026 CDBG grant funding. CDBG requires public participation for every year's allocation. As you know, the community development block, block grant CDBG program has operated since 1974 to provide local government with the resources to meet the needs of low and moderate income people. For years, CDBG funds have been used to make meaningful improvement throughout the city. The total appropriation for the grant this year, 25 to 2026, is $40,908. CDBG requires a 14-day notice for this hearing, and it was posted on December 23, 2024 until today, January 21, 2025. The city will utilize the CDBG funds to support the ongoing senior minor home repair program. I'd like to turn it over to our assistant planner, Huang, to provide you an update on our senior minor home program.
Thank you, Acting Director Lynn. Good evening, Mayor Parker, San City Council. So since the launch of the program from last September, the city has received about 16 interest forms from, from interested seniors and applicants. Our consultant has been conducting pre-screening calls in batches of seven of the pre-interest forms that we've received. And in our first batch, we have received three full applications, and two of them have already begun their pre-inspections. So now we're starting our pre-screening calls for the next batch. And we are still open and receiving interest forms for the program, for any interested seniors or applicants, if they do wish to apply. And if they have any questions, they can forward it to the planning department as well. Thank you.
Great. All right. Counsel questions?
That, that was my question. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Then I'd like to open this to public comment. Is there any public comment for this item on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to council and for council discussion. Any discussion?
Wonderful program. We had, we had a great presentation to the senior community commission, and I'm thrilled to hear that there's interest in this. Building ramps and handrails and things for, for our seniors and having a grant for it is tremendous. And, and being able to pay some of the consulting fee out of it as well. So I think it's, I think it's a great program and I'm thrilled that we're continuing with it. Money, more monies are coming in.
Great.
I anticipate an increase this next year, since it's been successful this year too, and looking at the needs of our seniors right now after this disaster.
Yeah. Okay.
I wonder if we could include Facebook, you know, communication training is. I know, it's not really an improvement up to property, but.
All right, if there's no other discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve this item.
I think we're just opening the public hearing, yeah?
Or do we need to?
No, you, yeah, you.
We can approve.
It's recommended that the city council open the public hearing, but you're also intend, you, maybe it doesn't say it in the description, but you're, you're going to adopt a resolution today too.
Okay. Is there a second hearing or is this a first hearing?
This needs this.
This is a one, this is not an ordinance, so it only requires one, one hearing.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2505, authorizing the allocation of CDBG funds for this coming 2025-26 year to continue for the senior minor home rehabilitation program.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, City Attorney, how long is this ordinance presentation? Is it long or short?
Three minutes.
Yes.
All right, we're going to power through this.
And he's always on time when he says three minutes, he knows his timing.
This is true.
Okay, so there's been a lot of litigation regarding rates for utilities. The legislator has provided some relief. They adopt, the legislator adopted AB 2257, which states that before you can sue on these rates, on, on adopted rates, that person that wants to sue needs to exhaust the administrative process. What does that mean? That means when the agency is taking the time to draft the study, to notice the meetings and public hearings, talking about all the different rates for sewer or water, or, well, sewer and water mostly, the individual that is going, that, that is unhappy with those rates, needs to come and express their concern and, and their issues during the administrative process. And if they fail to do it within the administrative process, then they can't avail themselves of the court system after. So, so the way this ordinance is adopted, it takes that model, and the language is drafted a little broader to try to capture more things, like beside just sewer and water, to capture trash pickup rates, other fees we might adopt that aren't mitigation impact fees, but other fees that exist within the city could be captured by this, so that all of them are governed by one administrative process that needs to be exhausted before someone can appeal to the court to challenge those fees or rates. Just to go through it quickly, the, the ordinance is going to establish a 45-day noticing period. Staff's going to have to publish online. There's going to be a public hearing, and then after the public hearing, the council can choose to adopt or not adopt the rates. And if there's any, anyone raises any concerns about it, the city is going to have to address that concern specifically, and the city council will need to consider that concern specifically before it adopts the rate. So we have a, we had an old ordinance on the books that hadn't been changed in like over 30 years. We're going to swap that ordinance out and replace it with this ordinance to provide one comprehensive administrative procedure for rates and fees. I conclude my presentation.
Two minutes. Exceeded expectations. All right. Counsel questions?
So is, is the public hearing the same as the, the tallying of the Prop 218 votes? Or is it, is it?
It, it's, it's going to be, no, it's, it's going to happen together.
Okay.
It's a similar procedure.
All right. Other questions? Yes, please.
And the, the types of fees or, you know, rates, whatever, what have you, that are covered by this, would be all, all would be, all would require mailing notice? Like similarly to how we do for, you know, fee hearings, we have to actually send written notice?
Right. And, and, and the idea is this, if, it doesn't apply to necessarily all of these, so if we don't avail ourselves of this procedure, then we just can't claim that the, the petitioner or the, or the plaintiff hasn't exhausted their administrative remedies. We lose that argument. But if we avail ourselves of this procedure, then we have that argument if we're going to defend it in court.
Then I have a very meta question. If someone wanted to challenge this actual ordinance, do they then have to follow the same procedure?
No, they have, they have 90 days, I believe.
Okay, so like. Okay, so like this, this won't apply to this actual ordinance?
Or, I'm sorry, they'll have three years to challenge this ordinance, yeah. It's legislative action.
I appreciate that question. Other questions? All right. Hearing no other questions, I'd like to open this up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to comment on this item? Hearing or seeing none, I'll bring it back to counsel for discussion. Any additional discussion? Seeing or hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Do we have to have another reading, you said? Because it's an ordinance.
Right, this is, this is, this is a first reading.
First reading, so we, so we do a motion to approve, and then it goes on consent for the second.
Correct.
Yep. So.
Move to approve ordinance fourteen seventy-six, establishing administrative remedies procedures for challenges to fees, charges, and assessments.
I'm sorry, Councilman Krebs, it, it's actually not an ordinance to, it's not a motion to approve. It's, it's a, it's a motion to introduce for first reading.
Okay. I move to introduce for first reading, ordinance fourteen sixty-seven, seventy-six, rather, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That takes us on to the next item, which is.
The council liaison.
The council liaison, all right. So how, yeah, I need a little bit of guidance on how to do this. Do you, do, City Clerk, do you give the presentation on this, or do you want me to discuss it at all?
I'm happy to give a brief presentation on this, Mr. Mayor. The, traditionally, the City Council enjoys a collaborative relationship with several partners throughout the community and within inter-jurisdictional agencies. The City Council is asked to make appointments of voting delegates and alternate delegates and representatives from the City Council to participate in those meetings, and then bring back to the City Council updates on the status of those meetings. It is the mayor's prerogative to select members with input from the members of the City Council.
Excellent. So I sent out an email to all council members asking for their priority list. Thank you all for getting back. I tried to balance everything in there, so we sent out earlier today that list. So I think that people should have it there. Are there any counsel questions on those items?
Yes.
All right.
Which is, some of these meetings are probably online versus in person nowadays, and that designates whether, are they all online?
I don't think any of them are online.
No, 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 like the LA County sanitation and.
No.
No.
No, they're all in person.
Sanitation is definitely in person.
It's now in person.
Mayor Protem, the sanitation is traditionally the mayor as the.
Yes.
And then the alternate is the mayor pro tem.
I know, I was just curious, like looking at calendars, like what's in person and what's not, because being able to show up in person is very different if he needs a, needs an alternative if it's online. Also, availability is different.
There, there are some of the meetings where the noticing location can be, like there's some flexibility. Like, so like the Clean Power Alliance, there are a couple of them, a couple of the meetings, for example, that have to be downtown, but like some of them are here in chambers, which are easy. So I don't know, I, I don't know on every one of them.
I know, I know for the sanitation specifically, because I dealt with this.
Yes.
In the last term. The, you, there is the ability to be remote, but you have to have the same reasons you have to have to be remote here in terms of like, you know, some actual reason, you know, identifiable reason, you have to actually, I don't think you have to give notice of your location, but there's a whole process. So it wouldn't just be, I can't make it to the sanitation district at that time. It would have to be other reasons, and so it's not particularly flexible, I should, I should say. That said, and not that I would ever suggest that we not send a representative, but there are many instances in which there, you know, are not always a representative from every agency at every meeting, and, you know, that is, that is fine in some instances as well.
And.
That's, that was gonna be my comment when I was liaison to the sanitation district. Our, our specific, is it?
District.
District, the district. Generally doesn't have a hard time getting quorum like the Board of Supervisors, city selection meetings do. So, not that we want, we want to encourage missing, but it's usually on a Wednesday afternoon, right?
Wednesday at one thirty.
Hard for teachers to do, right? But.
I'm not in a classroom anymore.
But. My, 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 my feeling is though, is that if we're gonna miss, I think they'll still get a quorum.
Yeah. And, and they are short.
They are very short.
You only have to stay for your district, so they do a random assortment of what order they do the districts in, and so if you arrive and you're lucky and your district's one of the first couple, it's a, it's, the meeting is half as long as your drive there.
So i- i- if I can just take a second, we've got the, the liaisons to the committees. Are there any concerns? Do we need to make any exchanges on, changes on the committees?
Commissions and committees.
Commissions, thank you, commissions, thank you for clarifying, commissions is what I meant.
It's okay.
I'm fine.
Great, thank you. Then on the boards, on the boards, I think is the best term, are there any of those that raise scheduling problems?
So I have a question on what the Independent Cities Association is. When I went to their website, they don't have meetings listed at all. They only have seminars, like a winter seminar, which is a, which is like a comp, like a going out of town to Santa Barbara, three-day event. Do we know much about what we're supposed to do with that?
I thought we talked last time we did the, about eliminating that, because we actually hadn't actively participated in, in many years.
I believe you're correct.
Yes. I was going off the last list, I thought, so maybe, do we, do we want to remove that one?
It looked like yes, because it was about eight hundred dollars to participate, and they don't have any meetings except for those seminars.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, I think we had talked about this last time and thought that we hadn't had, no one here could attest to any participation or, or input or value that, that people had.
Is there a cost for us to be part of independent cities outside of the seminars that Mayor Protem mentioned?
Just the membership fee, the annual membership fee, which has not been paid.
Which has not been paid.
No. So the city would, if, if the City Council decided to renew the, the membership fee, then there would be that cost incurred in addition to any annual conferences or workshops.
Okay.
Do we know which cities are still participating with that group?
Not off the top of bar, not off the top of my head.
It wasn't on the website either, I tried to look.
Well then, let's take what we've got here, eliminate the independent cities, and move forward with that. If that's okay with everyone?
Yes.
When does the chamber meet?
I just spoke to them, it's intermittent, and it's on, they have Zoom.
But what, what, what day do we know?
It's not specific right now, they're re-organizing.
Yeah, it, it, it's been very sporadic. I, I think the biggest thing is they, they have ribbon cuttings and some business highlights. And I, I think, you know, between all of us, I think, I, I'm willing to say we can find ways to, to support that, that one.
Samino, the president, just said they're looking at what dates they will be more consistent, because they have new board members and new board organization.
Yes.
Wednesday nights are bad for me.
Understood.
Okay.
Understood.
And they're usually during the day, Zoom?
City Attorney?
The Independent Cities Association has approximately thirty members, and the ones closest to us include Almani, Alhambra, Glendora, and Irwindale.
Okay.
I mean, can I suggest that if we have contact, I mean, that we maybe we eliminate it and this go around, but if, you know, if staff has contacts in any of those cities and can find out if there's any, you know, if they would recommend and kind of what, on what basis? I mean, that would be good information to have for the next time we talk about this.
All right. I don't think this one, because it's, it's the mayor's selection for our city, that I don't know that we need a motion or anything on that, is that true? Okay.
That's actually not true, there are resolutions, right?
Oh.
There are three resolutions that appoint.
Thank you.
That will appoint the sanitation district, and it would be the primary voting and the, the alternate representative, but also the League of California Cities for voting at the annual conference.
That's right.
And so there are the three resolutions that are required for approval, and if we could just for the record verbalize the appointments.
Okay. Let's first, if we're gonna, if, if we're gonna do this formally, let's open it for public comment, seeing if there's any public comment. Seeing or hearing none, I'll bring it back to, to, to counsel. Do we need any more discussion? All right, so now, can you, City Clerk, can you help us with, do, do we, if we take what is in the agenda, would that suffice for this, or do we need to do?
I.
Three separate ones?
Well, if, if you like, I can read the, my notes on the appointments and, and how I've received them, just so we can enter them into the record.
Please.
The recommendations from Mayor Parkhurst. As the primary liaison to the Community Services Commission is Councilmember Krebs, with the alternate being Councilmember Goss. The primary liaison for the Library Board of Trustees is Mayor Protem Lo, with the alternate as Councilmember Garcia. The primary vote, liaison for Natural Resources Commission is Mayor Parkhurst, with the alternate as Councilmember Krebs. Planning Commission, the primary liaison would be Councilmember Goss, with the alternate as Mayor Parkhurst. And for the Senior Community Commission, the primary liaison would be Councilmember Garcia, with Mayor Protem Lo as the alternate. Do I have that correct?
That's, that is how I seem to remember drafting it. So then do we need a motion for that one?
No motion is required, it's the, it's, it's just only on the three resolutions, that's correct.
Should we make a motion for the, for the resolutions?
Yes, of course.
Great.
Okay, so I move that the appointments to the San Gabriel Valley, sorry, the, sorry, the voting delegate for the League of Cities be Councilmember Garcia, and that the voting representatives from the city to the Los Angeles County Sanitation District be primarily Mayor Parkhurst as, and then with Mayor Protem Lo as the backup. And so I make a motion to approve resolutions twenty-five dash zero-three, zero-four, and zero-five, to that effect.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is, sorry. Is zero, zero-three is for the cog?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Read that into the record.
I can make that motion, I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-five oh three, placing Councilmember Goss as the appointed voting delegate for the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments with Garcia, Councilmember Garcia as the alternate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're at ten oh two, we have a informal thing that we do not accept agenda items after ten. But I, let me just ask, is it, because City Attorney has done so good on the last one, I, I, I think this is yours, can you do this one in three minutes?
One, just one, just one issue?
Yes.
We didn't read into the record, the Foothill Workforce Investment Board liaison.
Does that need a resolution?
I think you wanted to read that in the record.
Or the, or the CPA, actually.
So, for, just for the record then, the Council of Governments was approved under resolution. The Southern California Association of Government, primary would be Councilmember Krebs, Mayor Parkhurst as the alternate. League of California Cities was approved by resolution. Clean Power Alliance is the primary Mayor Parkhurst, with an alternative Mayor Protem Lo. Foothill Cities is primary liaison would be Mayor Protem Lo, and the alternate is Councilmember Goss.
You mean Foothill Workforce Investment Board?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Independent Cities, we've decided, the decision was made by the City Council to not renew that, that membership. And for the Sierra Madre Chamber of Commerce, the primary la, city la, City Council liaison is Councilmember Garcia, with the alternate being Councilmember Krebs. And then the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors liaison to, for the City of Sierra Madre is Mayor Parkhurst, with the alternate as Mayor Protem Christine Lo.
City Clerk, Clerk Aguilar, so the SCAG is also a voting liaison? There's, there's no resolution necessary for SCAG?
Yeah, that's one of the ones we did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was, that was twenty-five oh four, I think.
That's League.
Yeah, there, there were three resolutions.
SCAG's oh-five, I'm sorry, I'm, I, yeah. See, I, I caught one, but then I didn't catch the other.
No problem, always appreciate that. All right.
Um, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I appreciate the efficiency at which our City Attorney makes presentations. I have a fair amount of discussion that I wanted to engage in for this last matter. I'm suggesting that I am not nearly as efficient as a City Attorney, so perhaps it makes sense to, to postpone that item.
Thank you for the suggestion.
I second that idea.
Okay. City Manager, can we fit this in in the? All right. Great. Then, that takes us to the next item, is future agenda items?
Do we need to actually?
Yeah, I think just for the record, to continue the item, to vote on the continuance, so it's reflected.
I would.
Do we have to do a date certain, or is this can be dated certain?
No, you can, you can just vote to continue it.
I would move to continue agenda item, discussion item two, to a date to be determined.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you for that. Future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor? So in light of the presentation today, and I, and I don't know if this goes to staff, it goes to Planning Commission, or if it just comes to us if it is a future agenda item, but I would highly recommend that we figure out a way to streamline the permitting process for the destroyed and/or damaged structures in town. I would hate to be, I know there's gonna be a lot of people running to the, to the start, the starting line all at once to try to get contractors and materials and all these things. I would hate to be the bottleneck to preclude someone from rebuilding their home. So I'm not saying relax building standards or anything, I'm not suggesting anything like that, but I would really appreciate it if these applicants, they have the money, they have the architect, and they have everything lined up, that we put them to the front of the line, however that might work. But that's, that's my recommendation.
Great. Thank you for that suggestion.
I have a similar.
Please.
I guess the other question I would have, similar to ones I asked earlier, is do we have the staff needed to process that number of potential applications? And if we don't, is there a way to augment our staff in a way that could be included in our recovery costs?
My thought was Will Dan, I, I didn't know, because they do a lot of that work for us.
Right, but I'd, I'd love to be able to include it in our.
That'd be great.
Recovery.
So, Senior Planner Wolf and our City Attorney have already begun having those discussions. City Attorney, would you like to expand?
Well, this is for future items.
Not agendizing, yeah.
We're agendizing it, so I, I think, I think it's worth that, and, and giving Mr. Wolf a chance, yeah.
Like this seems like a combo item.
Yeah.
On the tailing of that, also with staffing issues, I'd like to look at analyzing how we can harden our city, also in terms of preparing our, our residents with looking at adding, I, I don't remember the title that chief used, but I believe it was a risk mitigation position, something like the fire prevention. Our master plan, I'd like to move forward with that faster than not. I can look up the wording if you'd like, hold on, let me go back in my notes. It's time's tired.
No, I.
The community liaison, the.
No, it's called the.
But he wants to use it also as the community liaison.
Yes, yes, which would be part of the.
Community risk reduction officer.
Community risk reduction officer. Thank you.
I might need a better title.
All right. Any other items?
Yes, there was one other one that was not related, so if anyone had something related. In light of, of schools going back right now, and I know we got delayed after Christmas break with schools going back, we've seen an increase in electrized motorbikes and scooters, and I'd really like us to look at our codes of what we require our kids to use. We've had a death in my district where a kid was on a motorized scooter. Um, we've had a death in my district where a kid was on a motorized scooter, uh, adapted it to go about sixty miles per hour. He hit a pedestrian and he, he, he's now deceased, as well as the injured woman. And, um, he was fifteen years old, so, um, I'd like to look at how we, how we adhere to the laws that are already there for the state of California and how we help our police and our traffic control and education to these parents about what these devices can do. And then I'd like to also look at, there's any codes that we need to include to keep our kids safe. And our, and transportation safe, just for our, our community.
Okay. Any, any other future agenda items?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned until next Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
Mayor, I need you to sign that.
I'm, I know, I.